Do we have Jim? Not yet.
We're not live yet.
I know, but we will be. I now call the July 12 meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Welcome to everyone in the room and those online. Speaking of online, we have nine board members present and in the boardroom today, and Jim McNeese is planning to join us via Zoom, but I don't see him on the screen yet. So Eric, if you'll give us a wave when he's there.
He did text and thought it would be around 9:30 when he arrived at his stop, wherever that is.
Jim will be a little bit late today. Are there any changes to today's agenda?
Yes. I'm, we need to make sure that we add 17-Q at the beginning of the meeting from yesterday.
Do I have a second for that? Dina? Any other changes to the agenda? Sorry, Jim, was that a motion to approve with that amendment?
Why, yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim. All in favor, raise your hand. That's nine, and no Jim. Motion passes. Thank you.
No other Jim.
That's right. Sometimes call them the Gyms. Okay. So with 17-Q at the top of the list, welcome Catherine.
Okay, I have to make sure that I get in range of this. All right. Madam Chair, Commissioner, members of board, thank you very much for letting me come before you today. Let me pull up 17-Q and hopefully project it properly.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you for just a second. Just a reminder that the reason that this is at the top of our agenda today is because it was pulled off of the consent agenda from yesterday so that we could get a little more information. So thank you for stepping in to provide that.
Absolutely. There we go. Hopefully that works. So I have for you the Evaluation Review Committee recommendations for higher ed, for teacher preparation program approval. These are guided by the regulations that you have adopted over the years. And they outline that every preparation program for every license and endorsement type must be peer reviewed and ultimately approved by you, the board. This is on a seven-year cycle as part of each education department's accreditation process. And every single program they offer needs to be reviewed and approved in this manner. There are currently 24 preparation providers, and I use that phrase because sometimes it's a college, sometimes it's a school within a university. So just to use the same name for everybody, they are preparation providers. Seven from the Regents institutions, 17 private or independent colleges, and one consortium, and then a total of 428 approved programs currently. So a very brief overview of the process, and I'm always in danger of getting on my speech, so please wave me to move faster. The programs present their description of how they fully align to the standards for that license area. There are different standards for the teachers to be trained in as opposed to the classroom. So how that colleges has designed the program for elementary or English language arts to fully address those standards. Yes, sir?
Catherine, let me just, because we're kind of doing this as a learning series in addition to doing this. You set the standards by which this gets evaluated. So I just want you to put that connection in what? You set the standards for the colleges for these programs. What gets confusing sometimes to you is you also set the standards for K-12. So like, English, we've been talking a lot about reading. But you, so you set these. She's taking you through then the process by which they evaluate their program against those standards and then bring you recommendations. So I just wanted you to kind of full, put a full picture to that loop.
Is it on? Okay, I can be louder. I'm usually worried about that, so I could be louder. So for each program that is reviewed that's on your list for today, they have to describe, the program has to describe how they are fully addressing the preparation standards for that license or endorsement area. The key assessments they use with the rubrics of those assessments to say this is how they measure that each teacher and educator candidate has fully mastered the content, the methods, the skills and knowledge for each standard. And then three cycles of collected data. That is then given to a review team, which are content experts from the classroom and from higher ed for each license area. So there's going to be a different review team for biology, for English, for elementary, made up of folks with expertise in that area. They review all that material from the university. And then the next entity that looks at it is the Evaluation Review Committee, which has sent their recommendations to you. They are a standing committee of P-12 educators, administrators, and higher ed administrators. So they serve as a second review of all of that material and to maintain consistency from one team to the next. And then ultimately, the recommendation comes to you. So a little flow chart. EPP standing for Educator Preparation Provider. So the College of Education, the Department of Education, the Division of Education, whatever they call themselves at their university, prepares their report and all their evidence. That goes to that content review team who writes, meets and writes an initial review of the program. We understand how this works, I don't quite understand how this other works. That goes back to the program at the college, who provides a response. Here's more information on the things that you had questions on. That response goes back to the review team, who then revises their report if any of their questions have been resolved. That revised team report goes to the Evaluation Review Committee along with all of the materials that have been part of the review process. So the university's second reply, the team's first reply, the university's first report. Everything goes to the Evaluation Review Committee. They look at it all. And they can agree with it. They could say, we need to edit this comment. Or they could make new comments if they wanted. The ERC writes their recommendation. I send it to the university and say, this is what the ERC is going to recommend. Are you, do you accept this, or do you want to request a hearing with the ERC to give more information? They accept it, or we have a hearing, and then the ERC finalizes their recommendation. So they again may change their recommendation based on new evidence, or stick with the same thing, and they send that recommendation to you. So I have a list of programs for you to look at. They are all continuing programs. So the decision options that you all have, you could give full approval for seven years. You could give approval with stipulation, which means there is some concern that has been identified that you want to have resolved within a timeframe. And that is typically a two-year timeframe. Or that you do not want to approve it. And I have 16 programs on the list for you today. Oh, tiny font, sorry about that. The first is from Baker University. The ERC's meeting for all of these programs was May 23. Baker has a biology program, it is continuing. The review team and then the ERC all felt that all of the standards were met, all the biology standards were met. They did have one concern about Assessment 2, which is used for Standard 1. Basically, that the assessment doesn't use the language of the standard. And just to give you a little more information, the program assessments like this are types specific. So Assessment 1 has to be the licensure test, it couldn't be something else. Assessment 2 has to address the candidate's ability to plan instruction. Assessment 2 is most typically the student-teacher work sample. So the university probably uses the same work sample template for biology, for English, for elementary, for art. So the template wouldn't necessarily have the language of biology in it. And, excuse me. The review team felt that it was a generic tool. But there are three other assessments that the program is also using for Standard 1. So the team did feel the standard was met. Just checking in, I can go on to the next university if you don't have any questions? Okay. I'm trying to practice not just running on. My next university for you is Fort Hays State. Again, these are from the May 23 Evaluation Review Committee meeting. And they have an elementary post-baccalaureate program, high incidence special ed, another type of high-incidence special ed. This is a limited apprentice license where somebody is working in the field while taking courses. Mathematics at the middle level, mathematics at secondary level, music and physics. The review teams for each of these, and there would have been separate review teams except for special ed and mathematics, I would have the same team review both, all found that those standards were fully met by the end of that exchange process I described. So the ERC is recommending all of these be approved. Any questions on Fort Hays? So Friends University has one program for your consideration, and that is their high-incidence special ed program. And again, the review team, by the end of that exchange between the university and the review team, felt that all of the standards were met, including the science of reading objectives. So they are recommending approval with no areas for improvement. And last on my list for you is Wichita State University. And their programs for you this month are elementary, high-incidence special ed, both a traditional route and a limited apprentice route, music, physical education, physics, and world languages. And the teams for each of those areas felt that all the standards were met with no areas for improvement. Do you have any questions on those?
Catherine, I know that the board has several questions around the science of reading. Can you talk a little about the, what involvement, if any, Dr. Lori Curtis has with you in working on that? I think they would find that instructive.
Absolutely. So the science of reading objectives were identified in 2020 by Dr. Curtis's predecessor. And we have been using those in the program reviews for the license areas that were identified for that. Early childhood unified, elementary, elementary unified, English language arts, high-incidence special ed, and reading specialist. There are five additional objectives required for those programs to report on in their review process. And as with the standards for each license area, the program has to identify what they're doing to address all the parts of those objectives, what key assessments they're using, and any data they have. And Dr. Curtis has been involved in each review that has come up this past year.
Looks like we have a few questions. Start with Kathy.
Thank you so much for doing this. My question unfortunately goes backwards about just some processes, I guess, so not specific to the programs before us today. But when we see on a review that they have literally insufficient, 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 you know, kind of, but then there's a full approval. And this was for a provider, not a program. So the question mark in my mind is, why would we fully approve instead of conditionally or for a short term to relook at data and different things that this is saying that they're limited in or insufficient in? Does that make sense? Can you speak to that without a?
It does. Are you thinking of next month's item?
No, it's actually May's.
Okay.
That was really, I know.
I don't know that I can remember back that far.
Didn't know if you could generally answer that or not, but because it was just for, it was a provider, not a program.
Okay.
So different areas, I'm sure. But it just caught my attention because of all, I mean, I kept seeing insufficient and limited, and I'm like, then why are we fully approving for another six, seven years?
Yeah. And it really is a discussion by the whole accreditation visit team. They, the accreditation visit team doesn't actually determine whether they feel a standard is met or not met. They leave that blank. The Evaluation Review Committee looks at that, and they determine whether they feel the standard is currently met or not met. And usually, the parameter is, is there any evidence of working on this, of making effort towards this? But then they have to come to a consensus on, do they feel that the university or the program is graduating people who have those skills necessary? So it is kind of a fuzzy holistic decision they make. And I always encourage them, they need to be comfortable with who is coming out of that program if they're going to recommend that it be approved. And if they are not comfortable with that, they need to explain why, so that the university knows what needs fixing. I like my little visual metaphors, and I will sometimes equate them to dents on your car. And sometimes you can have a dent that you can drive around perfectly well on, and sometimes you have a dent that you know you need to make an appointment to get fixed, and sometimes you just need to call a tow truck.
Go to Jim Porter.
Thank you. I have questions about another issue, and I've already talked to Catherine about that. So let me defer until after the vote, and then I want to have another discussion. And mine specifically relates to fidelity of the science of reading, to warn everybody what I'm going to talk about.
All right. I've got Dennis, and then I'll go to Ann.
Just one, can you get a little more insight into high incidence? Just how does that work out?
High-incidence special education, meaning, and this gets into things I don't know well, meaning characteristics, traits, abilities, difficulties that are, occur at a higher frequency in the population.
Like learning disabilities. Right, Shane, Shane's going to come up, I think, and assist on it. So the, these are, go ahead Shane.
Yeah, so for classification of special education, we base it on the type of services the student requires. So we have a low incidence and a high incidence special education. The high incidence, there's more frequency, and it's typically not as severe as an individual that would have, require those low-incidence services. So different types, and as far as those types are broken down by those services that are required by that student. Did that help?
And Dennis, operational, think about it this way, it helps me. Many of your high-incidence kids are in the classroom most of the day and then getting additional support. Your low-incidence teachers are oftentimes with those kids the majority of the day, if that helps. It's opposite of how you may think about, the high incidence, just the level of how many students are identified, so it's.
So we used to have different terms that we used, and I find those easier to explain. So we used to call high-incidence special education adaptive special education. So basically, they utilize the same curriculum and then just make minor changes to it to assist that individual with whatever the services they need. Low incidence was formerly called functional special education. So that student would receive a whole different curriculum based on their required services. Does that?
Okay.
All right, I'm going to Ann.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Do we ever use, I know we say we like some evidence that they are graduating students who know what they're supposed to know. Do we use the success rate of their students on the praxis and the PLT as a measure of that?
We do. So the praxis test and the PLT test, every program needs to provide evidence that at least 80% of their candidates are passing those tests. It can be difficult because for most universities, taking and passing the test isn't necessarily a graduation requirement. So if somebody is moving out of state, is taking a pause, is going to further schooling, they might not take the test right away.
I always tell people if they have, when administrators call and go, oh, gosh, they've taken it three times, I'm going, they should go back to the university, they were supposed to get them ready for that. And I don't know if that's the right advice, but dang, they, you know, so.
Ann, that is the right advice. And the other thing to remember, in some of our programs, colleges, universities, that number can be really small, too.
It can.
So in biology, you may only have one or two students coming out.
Right, right.
So that 80% can get, right? Let's say you have two, one passes and one doesn't, you're at 50%. That would be different than, say, Kansas State that is a large producer, those numbers are bigger.
I mean, I've heard this number thrown around, like 90% of people who take it pass it the first time, so that's pretty good. But that's not true for every university. So I know some of them that have lower pass rates, are we holding them accountable?
Yeah, we reach out to them. Those scores are documented in their Title II report, which is a national report. So that does come up, you know, what are you doing if this score is low?
All right, thank you.
Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you said we had three options? We had like a, did you say we have like, we could do a two-year review? And rather than doing, giving them seven years, we could actually check back, I've learned a lot this week about some other things that have come up and based off of our agenda for this month. And so a lot of things, there are a lot of discussions that need to be happening for maybe under-reporting on some of the things that are going on in the districts as far as, well, I'll get into that in another time. But as far as just going back and maybe reviewing, rather than giving them seven years, doing more of a two-year review, we have an option today, correct?
You do, if you wanted to approve them with stipulation, I think they would want to know what the stipulation is, what is the concern?
Okay.
Because there was currently the one documented concern for biology standard one, but the standard was identified as met overall. So if you wanted that checkup, what on?
So it has to be on a specific, I would have to say a specific one, maybe, for like high incidence or something like that.
I would think so.
Couldn't be all of them, we'd have to pull it off and maybe relook at the high-incidence one from whatever university it was. Let's see, go back, oh, there it is.
Go back?
Yep. Friends, maybe?
Neither of those had areas for improvement.
Okay.
There was a biology standard, but the team did feel the standard was met.
Okay. And maybe I could just follow up with the, is there a way to follow up as a board member with a team and just?
The team disbands after each review. So if you did have questions, I would be happy to reach out to the university.
Otherwise, it's just seven years, they get it for seven years.
Seven years unless something comes up that creates a concern, you know, like Mr. Porter has mentioned.
Okay. All right, then I'll leave it at that, then.
Okay. Yeah.
Danny.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry, one sec.
Can I just answer?
Yes.
Michelle, so if there was a concern, Catherine can restart that cycle because of it. So take the science of reading, which you said needs to be done, that got inserted into that, and then they had to adapt to that.
Yeah.
So if the board came and said, well, we have, we want to do X, I'm going to make sure every college/university does that, that would be inserted into that cycle, and you could do that, if that makes sense.
And I can also add, if the program changes itself, if it drops courses or adds courses or changes the key assessments that it's using by more than 25% in an academic year, that's a significant change. So they then need to resubmit that new program for a complete review and phase out the old model.
Okay, let's see if I make sense. So Ann was talking about tests, and we're worried because we have a real shortage of educators, teachers. And so, but that student, maybe they're getting a college degree, but they flunked the test. Do we need to relook at the test?
That actually came up in recommendations from the communications?
So, Madam Chair, may I? So Mr. Zech, that we, the licensure team with our working group, did a review over the last year of our tests with that working group that I presented on yesterday, and they did make recommendations for that exact situation scenario that you described. And I will be providing you information, a discussion item next month at the board to address that. But we did identify some concerns with some of the tests, and so we decided to look into it. And also, each year, if there are changes to tests, because our testing service, ETS, they regenerate tests. Every test that we approve is ran through our professional standards board to review and take a look and make a recommendation to establish a cut score and accept that test, and then send it to you for final approval.
And then also, are we looking at kids that enroll that start out, young men and women that start out wanting to be teachers and change in the middle of going to college? Do we need to be looking at what's going on there?
I may have to defer to you on that, Catherine, but for us, that's where it gets a little difficult for us to track, is at a certain point, they decide to become part of the teacher preparation program and get picked up. Then through the university, they're tracking them through that college of education, and they can share that information with us. But until they make that decision, we don't necessarily know if they were originally scheduled to be in the program and then dropped it until they get like that junior, senior year. I don't think, did I answer your question or not?
I just, it just seems, it seems like we need to dig, I mean, since we have a shortage, and a lot of young people, you know, they're going in it, into the profession for the right reason, and then all of a sudden, we lose them. It seems to me, I'm one of those ones, I want to, I want to know why. I want to find out, because I'm one of those ones, so if we lose a customer, it's not their fault, it's us. I always, it comes right back to us. And so, and those are our customers, those are our future to teach our kids, and so why are we losing them? Not this, I don't know, maybe I'm thinking wrong, but that's just, I always want to look here first. What do we need to do different to bring those people that really are enthused about doing the thing?
Yeah.
Am I making sense, or am I just in la la land?
No, no, I understand. And you know, from a licensing perspective, there's always that fine line where we have our established standards that we have set by regulations, and then where's your compromise? And then there's a piece of ownership by that university that, do I need to speak into the microphone a little louder? Sorry.
Honestly, I was just trying to figure out why it's so loud there, but it's not as loud here, and it drops off some way.
Because I hear myself just fine.
No, I know you do. I'm at the podium, too, and I know you do.
I'm going to have to do this. But, okay.
So if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
We were a little tired at the end of the day yesterday when we did requests for agenda items for the future, and Danny, I feel like that is absolutely an agenda item that we could put on the list. Because we do know that there's data, there's not as much data around when students are dropping out while they're enrolled, but there's plenty of research around what happens after they graduate, why it's so important to have support as you're beginning your career as an educator. So that may be something that we could discuss. So that may be something that we could discuss.
I know in business, we, we, our attitude has always been, it's us. If we, if a customer, we lose a customer in service, we lose them to body shop parts, we don't sell them a car, and I'll defend their right to spend their money wherever they want. But if we lose them, we always, we always talk about that detail, why that cut, what did we do wrong? Not what they did wrong, but what, what did, why didn't they say yes? Does, I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Going to go to Anne.
Thank you. I think Danny makes a good point. And I know we have a lot of history that new members, you know, wouldn't be familiar with. But several years ago, we had the Blue Ribbon Task Force on teacher retention and recruitment. And it's on our website, you can go look and see. But they had recommendations for local school boards, for the state school board, and for legislature. And we did virtually all of ours. And then as a follow-up, we also created the Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee that since came up with some really good ideas about how we can grow our, our, the, the pool of teachers. And we actually have an annual conference on this, if, you know, people are interested. In fact, several years ago, we had a guy from University of Pennsylvania who laid out why people come and teach and why they leave teaching to help school administrators who were there understand what you could do to, you know, retain teachers. So we're doing a lot of work in this area. I still think we ought to have it as a, as an, an agenda item so we all understand what the history is and what we've done and what we haven't done. Because we didn't do everything, you know, that was on the list. On the other hand, you don't want somebody in the field who can't pass the praxis because they really don't know the stuff. You know, so I think the, the, the changes the professional standards board is considering are good. That, okay, if I have failed it twice, let's take a closer look. Is it because you really don't know your stuff, or you just freak out when you take tests, you know, that kind of thing? So, good points. We need to have this discussion and see if there's anything left on that list that the state board needs to do. And then we need to, I know Shane's been trying to get the vacancy supply committee back together again. And now, I think Shane, are we actually going to move that under the PSB?
Yes, ma'am. So at our last professional standards board meeting, the TVSE officially rolled up under the PSB. And the PSB also tasked the TVSE with some additional work to do. So I will be convening of what's left of that committee and then filling vacancies for individuals that left.
And I don't want them just to do what's on the PSB's list. I want to turn them loose to explore and think about, you know, what are all the things we're doing that are keeping people out? What could we do better? So anyways, a lot of stuff going on, but, you know, we need to have that discussion so everybody's up to speed on what we're doing, what we have left to do.
PSB, Professional Standards Board. Well, I, and that is, that is the board that then looks over licensure. Teacher Vacancy and Supply was, as Anne said, a committee created by this group to implement the Blue Ribbon Task Force work in their merging.
Two very important committees that we have board representation on, so we keep these conversations going.
All right, one last question from Dennis.
Well, just, you know, in business and some professions, if someone leaves, they have an exit interview. Maybe that's just a simple way of applying what we're talking about is you have a student leave a, a college career course, whatever, the counselor, whatever, they would, you know, actually fill out a form that would give us some information as to why.
Yeah, and, and I think they do. I think the issue that we'd run into is, do we have access to that information, or is that something kept with the university? And we would also have the same issue with local control for a district that is capturing exit interview. Do they, are, should they release it to us? Will they release it to us? And with local control, I don't think there's a requirement that they would do that. So it makes it a little difficult to get some of that data, and, and you'd run across the same thing with the university.
Thank you. A good little aside, we'll come back to seventeen Q. At this time, a motion would be in order to go ahead and approve seventeen Q. Anne, is there a second? And do we have Jim McNeese yet? Okay, not yet. Second, thank you, Kathy. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? I see none. That's nine, zero. Oh, and Jim Porter.
And this is not, I'm going to ask some questions about the science of reading, and I warned Catherine, so this is.
It's okay.
When I talked to you yesterday, I, I said that, yesterday I'd heard information from two Regent's Universities where, in both cases, the leaders said, two separate universities, two separate sources that I trust, said that the leader said, you know, there are several ways to teach reading. And that's true. If you're in that sixty percent of people, they're going to learn how to read anyway. It is not true if you're in that forty, depending on whoever you read, forty to sixty percent that's going to struggle. And that is the science of reading. Since that time, I've heard a report from another, different leader of a different institution that said, and this is, this is fuzzy, so I'm going to kind of paraphrase. Because of technology, it may not be so important to be able to read after a few years. If this is being said by the people that lead Regent's Institutions Education Programs, it makes me question whether or not they are doing the science of reading with fidelity. You know, I had some of the same questions, if you remember, when Shane was up there, or somebody was up there yesterday about local schools fidelity, about that. I want to make sure that whenever we are reviewing, that we're getting, I mean, I shouldn't say this publicly, but I was a school superintendent for a long time. I know how to fill out the forms to, to tell you what you want to hear. And, and I want to, is there, there needs to be a way for we can see that they're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. And quite frankly, with, based on what I heard yesterday, I question, I do know as a leader, the people that worked for me got real concerned when I got concerned. And if we have that sort of cavalier attitude, and, and these are, you know, hearsay reports. But the resources, I, I believe the sources. That's a real concern to me because we, kids need to have to learn how to read, and teachers have to know how to teach how to read. And, and, and that's just a huge concern to me, and I, I need to, and so going in, in the future, even if we have a program for chemistry, every time something comes up, I'm going to ask for document, for, for reliable documentation of whether or not that, that institution is taking seriously the responsibility to teach kids to read. I visited with both Shane and Lori Curtis, and I know that we're looking at the possibility of adding a ro, more robust test because the praxis is okay, but it's not the best when it comes to, to teaching reading. So, you know, I think that work is being done, especially here. But I, I think it needs to be clear, and I hope that my colleagues agree, and I know some of you do, that, that we're serious about the fact that every child needs how to read. And if, if schools are not doing that with fidelity, if institutions of higher education are not doing that with fidelity, there needs to be a, first of all, they need to get their act together. And secondly, there, there needs to be consequences if they do not. I intend to preach this sermon at every possible opportunity until every child in Kansas can read.
Very good. Thank you. Betty.
Thank you. To kind of throw something else in there, and I did have an opportunity to visit with a few teachers. This is the thing that's very interesting, because we are now treating phonics as though that's brand new. And the thing that, that's a great concern, and what was shared with me, is, okay, this was the approach. Then it was changed. We adapted to that change. Now we're being blamed for not being successful in that area because we adapted to a change that was mandated, not our preference. And now we're saying, we need phonics. And our teachers are looking at me like, for real? You know, and I say that in all seriousness because sometimes when we are putting the responsibility at the feet of our teachers, we really need to look at, what are we doing? And, and phonics was just a perfect example because one size does not fit all. And, you know, my dad used to say, well, if it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? Phonics worked. It was changed. And now we're going back as though we've, you know, just discovered electricity. There's nothing wrong with that. Don't, don't, don't misunderstand me. Because if there is a better way, then it is our responsibility to implement that better way. If it's not working, or maybe that better way worked for some, but not all. And so instead of trying to find a silver bullet, maybe we need to realize that there's a variety, and one size does not fit all. That is just another perspective to, to look at that I wanted to introduce. Thank you.
Catherine now is going to give you a preview of what you're going to see next month, just like Jay does on the K-12 side. So we, so Catherine's modeling out what Jay does on KISA. This is the review or the receive item of what you'll see next month in case you start to have questions and want to ask those between the month.
There we go. Yeah, comment from Anne real quick.
I did hit my button. In all fairness, it's way more than just going back to phonics. Okay, when you read our Blue Ribbon Study and the, the Task Force Study, there's way more to it, and it does accommodate different learning styles. So for anybody who's not familiar with what came out of the dyslexia task force recommendations and the five different recommendations, it's, I mean, I get your point. That's why I'm a great reader, because we did do phonics. But it's way more than that, involves more of, of brain science, too. So we're not just going back, we're doing more, in all fairness.
Catherine, I've got one more, and then we'll bounce back to you. Danny.
Sorry. I, I could be wrong here, but I feel like our culture is the people in the trenches a lot of times are afraid to really voice how they feel because they feel there's going to be third-party pressure on them. And so I think there's a lot of, of people in the trenches. And that's really where you learn, at least in business, that's where you learn how you need to change things because usually it's good for the whole. So I don't know how it, how we change our culture where they feel like they're, can speak their mind freely and not be thumbed. Because I, I know for sure that that goes on in our culture and every school district.
All yours.
August preview. So for August, I have for you accreditation for Barclay College and a program approval for Wichita State University. Going back to the, the process, again, they are guided by most of the same regulations and a few more that I mentioned earlier. And every provider has to be peer-reviewed and accredited by you, the Board of Education, before it can operate, admit anyone to their licensure track program, or graduate anyone from that program. Again, it's a seven-year cycle. And the program reviews are the first part of that, once they get accredited. You do accreditation very first to open the door, and then it becomes something that builds on those program reviews. So after the very first review, the program review happens first. So that makes it, but the very first time, you got to build the roof before you can put the rooms under it. Kansas is a partner with the Council for the Accreditation of Educator Preparation. We have seventeen universities that get accreditation from both you, which is required, and CAPE, which is not required. And so we use those same expectations also with the seven colleges and universities that get their accreditation from you, but do not partner with that larger group. So just a reminder of the, the groups involved, again, we have the education provider. So that is the Department of Education, the College of Education, whatever they call themselves at the university. And similar to last time, but on a broader scale, they have to give information on how they make sure every license track they offer is aligned to the accreditation standards, the higher ed accreditation standards. How do they make sure every program is covering the license-specific standards? What are the key assessments? What are the benchmarks that candidates go through in that program? How do you get in? What qualifications do you need to get in to stay in? How do they monitor you through the program? How do you get in to qualify for student teaching? How do they know you've been successful in student teaching? Watching each candidate all the way through. The data they have on that, so as they're monitoring and as they are analyzing, how are our students doing, our college students doing? And then, how are they using that data for continuous improvement? And very specifically, that they have their stakeholders involved. So the school districts where they place people, the cooperating teachers that have student teachers in their classroom, their alumni in the field, that they have input on making the, analyzing that data and making those decisions for continuous improvement. What are their policies and procedures? So if you do get somebody that seems like they want to, to be a teacher, but maybe you're having trouble following the content, or maybe when you practice, you have some behaviors that, you know, we just don't use in a classroom. Are there other routes that that person might have available to them? So they could be involved in education if maybe being a classroom teacher is not something they would be particularly skilled at. So the university, the Department of Education, I should say, the College Department of Education, writes up a self-study documenting, this is how we feel we have addressed each of these accreditation standards. And here's all of our policy evidence we can think of, and our data, and our tools we use. They submit that to a visitation team, which is made of P-12 educators or administrators and higher ed faculty or administrators. They review all of that. They write what's called a formative feedback report. So you'll notice the pattern is the same from the program review to the accreditation. You have that preliminary review documenting anything that's concerned. And then the provider writes a second report, an addendum. I've skipped to my next slide because I knew it was there. The provider writes an addendum with additional information. The review team looks at that, and here's where the two processes differ. The visit team then goes to the university, we go on Zoom now, and interviews, the faculty interviews, the current student candidates, interviews the alumni, the stakeholders, so the, the P-12 partners, faculty from arts and sciences that might teach your English courses. They interview everybody. They look at data that maybe would not be provided in those evidence packets because it's part of the, the big server database, or it has confidential information. And they write a final report. That final report goes to the Evaluation Review Committee. They make a recommendation. It goes back to the, the provider. Do they accept it, or do they want a hearing? If there's a hearing that is held, the ERC finalizes their recommendation and brings it to you. So the pattern is very similar from one to the other. And again, you can recommend full accreditation if they are a continuing provider. And again, you can recommend full accreditation if they are a continuing provider, accreditation with stipulation or probationary accreditation. So two types of shortened accreditation. The difference being accreditation with stipulation means the ERC felt that all the standards were met, but there is a serious concern. And they recommend checking back in typically two years. Probationary accreditation means there is one accreditation standard not met. And that is again, a checking back in two years. Or not accredited. Questions on this? Yeah. Yes, sir.
I apologize. Can you go back? You said something about somebody didn't have the right personality. Can you expound on that?
Maybe a little bit because I, I'm not an expert on dispositions, they call them. But that is the teacher candidate learning to work with schoolchildren. And one of the key tenants is that every child can learn. Every child can be taught. And others can be their, their comportment and professionalism in the classroom.
Danny, I'll give you an example. A long time ago, myself and two other people got in a car and drove to Fort Riley Junior High School to student teach. And we got there and we went our separate ways. We student taught the first day we got in the car to drive back to Manhattan. And as we took the exit, those of you know, right there in Manhattan, one of them said, I don't like kids. And, and quit, quit the very next day. I don't like kids. I just, today was horrible. That's, 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 that's a disposition. I don't have, I don't have what it takes to work with young people. That's what he said.
Yeah.
Too bad it took him till. Yes, too bad, yes. But I mean, I mean, some people just aren't, aren't made to work with young people and that's somewhat of a disposition. Or, you know, they, they don't, they don't believe that kids can learn to read, so.
So the college tries to work with those folks as they are taking classes. Yo, we think this is a great profession. Do you think this is a great profession? Do you want to spend all day in the classroom?
That I understand and I, I'm with you a hundred percent. But sometimes some of the craziest people are the best teachers. I mean. I know, I know that sounds nuts, but so that's why I was honed in on that personality thing. Because I've had, seen some crazy people and the kids love them and they learn. It's like, are you kidding me?
It works. One more question, Kathy?
On the visit team.
Yes.
Like with our ARC stuff, we have at least three members on the OVT team. So is there a number assigned?
There are five accreditation standards and so there are five team members. That can be increased if the university has an exceptional number of licensed programs they offer. The standards vary a little between what are called initial level programs, typically undergraduate programs. But licensing defines it as your first foray into teaching. And advanced programs, which are typically graduate programs. But from licensing, they define it as an additional license or endorsement that goes on top of an existing one. So the standards are a little different there. If you have graduate and undergraduate programs, if you've got a bunch of them, then we might add a dis, add an additional person to the team. Yeah. Alrighty. So for Berkeley College, the ERC looked at those five reports I mentioned, the two reports from the university before the team goes and interviews folks, the teams reports, and then the replies after that visit. And the ERC is recommending probationary accreditation for two years through June of 2026. They did not find any concerns with standard one, which is the program's alignment to the licensure specific standards. Some of the other accreditation standards, standard two is working with stakeholders, with your P-12 partners. And they had three areas for improvement there. Evidence that partners co-construct mutually beneficial pre-K, pre-K-12 grade school and community arrangements for clinical preparation. So that the partners are working with the college to design those early field experiences and student teaching experiences. AFI 2.2, the EPP did not provide sufficient evidence that partners prepare, evaluate and support high quality clinical educators, both provider and school-based. So that is the training provided to the cooperating teachers. And with all of these areas for improvement, the statement in bold is very closely related to the accreditation component being addressed. And more detail is in the rationale. So I'm going to switch to looking at the rationale to give you a little more of the detail. So the third area for improvement for standard two, the EPP provided some evidence that they work with partners to design and implement clinical experiences, but there was insufficient evidence that partners review and analyze data that demonstrates candidates developing positive impact. So the real concern is having stakeholders analyze data. Standard three is tracking the candidate through the program from recruitment, admission to education through graduation. So the concern there, AFI 3.1 is on component 3.3. The EPP does not provide multiple measures with disaggregated data analyzed to support candidates' ability to teach and impact the P-12 learner. Yes?
Danny.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thank you. So, but we're, tell me what you mean by diverse pre-K grads and grade students. And then up there, it's diverse pre-K.
Diverse.
To 12.
Pre-K-12 grade students' learning and development. So every, every range of variety you can have. And the, the emphasis with the accreditation standards is reflecting America's pre-K-12 student body. So do they have experience with urban, suburban and rural areas? Do they have experience across the grade level of their license? Do they have experience with both boys and girls in their classroom? Ethnicity, religion, race, skill sets? So do they have kids in their classroom that might have special education support that they receive? Do they work in schools that have a high number of free and reduced lunch? So that they can take their license and be prepared to go work in, in any school that they apply to? So standard three, we did AFI 3.1. Standard four is tracking the impact of the graduate of the program after they've graduated and they're working in the classroom. And the concern here, the EPP described assessments of candidates. So the candidate is before they've graduated and gone and gotten a job. But provided insufficient evidence of assessments measuring completer, alumni, impact on the classroom, impact data or analysis of, of impact data. Context and description source were not provided. So there's not a lot of information on their graduates after they go get a job and how they are performing on the job. Standard five is the quality assurance system. So AFI.
I'm going to pause you for just a moment. Dennis, was your question on the previous slide?
Yeah, no, thank you. Just how does that happen? If, if the college is, they're responsible to follow up, do they? How does that actually work on the ground? A teacher, is a new teacher in a classroom? Somebody from the college actually sits in their classroom and watches them? Is that how that works?
Every college is going to do it differently. And thinking of scale, a very large university will probably send surveys. Berkeley is, is quite small. Their classes can be half a dozen people. You know, maybe a dozen people. They are reaching out to their folks, probably with an email survey. I think of one college several years ago that mentioned they, they maintain contact on Facebook. So they're reaching out to their graduates in the field. Hey, what are you doing? And they, they formally check generally at the first year and the third year. How are you doing? Do you have any measure that you're having a positive impact? And then they also reach out to the employer. What is your assessment of this hire from us? Are you satisfied with their preparation?
That, that makes a lot of sense to me is that they would use the administration of the employer. Berkeley, is this kind of, is this new for Berkeley? Are they just getting into that because they're, they're a small school?
They're, they're quite small. So literally when one person takes a, a pause or, you know, makes a life decision to, to hold off their career, it has a significant statistical impact on their numbers. Words. The, they are new getting into this. They've been around a long time, but they're new in these accreditation standards. Their whole education department is one full-time person, you know, and, and she's working really hard. And trying to also provide continuity with what was done with the previous year because they had recent turnover, so.
I, I'm just interested in that, you know, being in that, they're in my district and out in Western Kansas and a little school that's, we need.
Standard five. So this is the quality assurance system again. And the concern for, the little preview screen is always in the place you don't want it. The first is that the, the quality assurance system isn't sustainable. Successful change stems from analyzed data and informs goal-setting, planning and evaluation of ongoing changes. And that was not clearly evident to the visit team. AFI 5.2. A performing continuous improvement process involves interpretation, analysis, goal-setting, planning and implementation, implementation to continually assess change. The EPP needs to address a process by which program improvement is systematic. So again, making sure that, that succession planning and data analysis is, is stepwise, is systematic. So those are the areas for improvement. And then stipulations are a more serious concern than an area for improvement. So the team did not find any stipulations, any grave concerns for standards one through four, but they did for standard five. So the stipulation for the quality assurance system is that data from multiple different measures that taken together comprise a coherent quality assurance system to assess program and candidate performance are not clear. Data are not disaggregated or fully revealed for all standards related to content and pedagogical proficiencies. Multiple pieces of evidence are missing to demonstrate a systemic, I think it's supposed to mean systematic, assessment process. So the Evaluation Review Committee's recommendation is that those first four standards for accreditation are currently met. But the quality assurance system standard, they do not feel is currently met. Their recommendation to you is a probationary accreditation with a new visit team to look specifically at the quality assurance standard in two years.
So where at Berkeley College do we see what they're teaching science of reading?
They have one program, the elementary program. And the elementary program relies on the ETS Praxis CKT test to assure that candidates have the science of reading. So that was looked at in the program review and the, the test has been approved by the previous literacy program coordinator.
As we look at it, where do we see science of reading in their, in their program?
In their program? So that would be presumably in their methods courses and I would need to dig that out for you.
Can we know that by next month?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to write it down. You got it? Awesome. All right. Just to give you a little background, Berkeley's previous accreditation was in 2018. You notice that is a shorter time span because they are new to your accreditation process. Previously, there were not concerns for the standards and there were not stipulations. Moving on to Wichita State's recommendation. So Wichita State, I have one recommendation for you from the Evaluation Review Committee. And that is for their district leadership program. And the review team in the Evaluation Review Committee did not find any areas of improvement for that. They felt all standards were met.
I think that was Jim McNeese ringing the doorbell. Right, he's in the Zoom.
So, so again, as you think about the flow, these are received. You'll then vote on those. And then Catherine, if there's others, will present the new ones to you. And then that way, we may not always go this much in depth on those, but you'll have those. And then if you want to ask questions, you can ask those with me or when we're on the, the duo Zooms in preparation for the next meeting. So to get in a cycle that you see.
Thank you so much, Catherine. And I want to, I want to point out that Kathy is the one that pointed out 17Q asked for more questions. Thank you, Kathy. Obviously, we got a, a good conversation out of this and I think this is going to be a good path forward.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. And welcome, Jim McNeese. We now have. So we're running almost exactly an hour behind. If you're, if you're following the agenda that was published, we're going to go to Natalie Clark and then we'll take a break after Natalie.
We should point out, Madam Chair, had we run this last night, you would, you would have been sleeping here instead of having dinner. So we do appreciate the, the flexibility in letting Catherine go home last night.
Okay. Okay, Chair Haas, and Board members, Commissioner Watson. I wanted to go over the request for a vote for Career and Technical Education Pathway Credentials. Were asked Senate Bill 123, new section 10, that the state board has a vote to approve in addition to the Kansas Board of Regents, who will be meeting via Zoom on the 18th to look at the industry SOC credentials. Substitute for House Bill 2466, new section seven, asks the state board to vote and approve a list of high value and standard credentials. So looking at Senate Bill 123, new section 10, it is the industry SOC credential list. The piece about this list that I wanted to clarify also was that this list, the industry SOC credential list, each school district that offers career and technical education in grades nine through 12, if a student asked that the fee is paid for them to take this credential exam, it would be reimbursed by the district. And this is something that comes back to the state board every year for review. So looking at the Excel in CTE high quality industry list, I wanted to point out some questions were asked yesterday about high school diplomas. So there is a determination process for being placed on this list. There is an aligned program at the post-secondary. So at our two-year, our community and technical colleges. The occupations must have an industry credential tied to them if the student is training for that occupation. It must lead to a credential and it can be attained by a high school student with the education level. with the education level for the occupation of at least a high school diploma. So looking at these, they'd be high skill, so more than, than a high school diploma, high wage, and high demand.
Got a follow-up question there.
Okay.
Danny?
Because of our numbers on proficiency levels, level one, two, three, four is low. My concern with this is that this isn't going to enhance our proficiency level. That you can get a, you can get a high school degree and be last in your class. And so my concern, there's more to it than just them getting the career tech thing. They're gonna re, my gut feeling is they're gonna relax. I'm not saying I'm right, but my gut feeling is they're gonna relax in their schoolwork, but still get the diploma. And so, again, we're showing how low we are in proficiency of different things.
One way to think about that, Danny, that I think of is when you get to that junior, senior year of high school, you're helping young people start the transition after high school. You're not, you're not stopping the teaching, but you're starting that transition. Fully agree with you from the time they enter school in kindergarten or pre-kindergarten to about 10th or 11th grade, that, that reading, that basic math skill, basic science skills are really, really important. Uh, and not, not that they're not that ju, that later junior, senior year, but that transition, you're not transitioning them in eighth grade. You still have time. So we're trying, and you've heard us talk about, get those foundational, we're calling them foundational skills built so that those decisions then at the end of their high school career can be starting to be made. Uh, that's, that's the, that's the way it's packaged together.
A couple of months ago, we came abroad, the students who are concentrators in career and technical education courses are to meet performance indicators in reading, math, and science. And they had met and exceeded those statewide. So they did really well the last measurement of those reading, math, and science indicators based upon students who were concentrators, who had had two credits, and went on to take the state assessments.
One more. Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So are pathways now going to be tied to funding? Like in districts, will they be responsible for paying for this back in their districts, for offering these pathways for their? I mean, the taxpayer may want that, that local representation may want that. But as far as, um, I'm seeing career, uh, I'm seeing industry and businesses now driving education and pathways being tied to funding. That's what I see in this. And I, I'm, I mean, some districts may want this, and, and their constituents may want this, and their taxpayers may want this. But as far as, you know, that being something now that we're just gonna do with education at the Department of Education, whether the Department of Labor, Department of Commerce, it's now the Department of Education and lands on us, for these teachers now to be qualified and credentialed in the school districts now to be doing these, these, and we're not talking about shop and econ, home economics and cooking and kitchen and stuff that you did in middle school. I'm talking, these are like career pathways. We have a list of things that are going to be reviewed every year. It's kind of like evidence-based. When I see evidence-based, some of those evidence-based things are more national and, and done in Washington DC. They're not done in Kansas. They're not, not all of them, some of them are. But a lot of them are coming out from, from federal programs and are coming from DC. So I'm just wanting to bring all this out there so that we can have big discussions on this because this is, this is now funding being tied to a pathway rather than funding being tied to education. And there's a lot of education where we can, we need improvement on in our districts right now that we're not even meeting the needs of some of the students that are in the school buildings on education. So I'm concerned now we're adding another thing onto these districts that it, it's a, it's a big ask. And I just want to make sure everyone is on board with that.
So this goes back, Michelle, to the complicated part we talked about yesterday. Remember I said there's so many moving parts and, and if we're, and if we're, it's hard to understand. It's, it's easy. So pathways have been funded for a long time from the state of Kansas. So in, in the larger districts like Olathe, they even have schools that specialize in, in those career academies. They, I think that's what they call them. And if you want a, a career academy and, uh, you know them better than I do, you would go to a certain school to get that. That pathway in high school receives additional state funding for the equipment in that pathway. So, but Natalie, this, then this law adds on and says, if you're in one of these occupations, I'll use welding, and you're going to take the test to be an AWS welder, that the school district would, would pay for that assessment to be done for the student. That's what Natalie said. So it's a little bit different. So what we're asking today is, you're right, but the point, we call it point-five funding because there's additional funding, somewhat like AT-RIS, somewhat like bilingual, that goes to pathway programs. Those pathways then have to be validated, and there's a lot of process. Again, does industry really want this pathway? Education would be one, right? That we want more educators. You could enter a pathway. Student does not have to enter a pathway. You know, uh, but, but they could, and then there's additional resources for that. Does that help?
And the high demand, high wages, Kansas-based. So it's looking at the needs in Kansas, like the needs for educators. So based upon Kansas, and of course, the interest of the student.
Just a quick reminder that the motion on this, um, does say that we're seeking approval of a list of industry SOC credentials as outlined in Senate Bill 123, new Section 10, and a list of high-value industry-recognized career and technical education credentials, and a list of career, standard career and technical education industry-recognized credentials per, per sub for House Bill 2466. And the, the, and the Kbor has to approve the same list, just as a reminder. Anne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, back to Danny's comment. CTE students are generally more proficient, not less. Okay. What they learn helps them, it, it puts everything to work that they've learned in math and reading, and, and it's good. And everything we do, I've been working on CTE with this department since the 1990s. And I can tell you that everything we do is Kansas-driven to help Kansas students get good jobs and encourage them to stay here and not leave this state. It's all Kansas-driven. And this is not a big ask. This isn't even anything new. We've had extra funding for tech ed for how ma, how many decades? I don't know. It's like $30 million. And it's to help kids obtain skills that they can, can use for a lifetime. So this is not new stuff. This is just consolidating a list of certificates that kids could earn in high school. And like we said, last year, 1,600 did out of 150,000 high school kids. So it's not like this is massive government, you know, manipulation of kids. This is a good thing. I mean, we've had, well, remember the kids from MacLouth? They were excited about what they're doing, excited to get those certificates. The CTSO officers were here. They're excited about what they're learning about business skills in high school. It's good stuff. And so I, I hope we support this list. Like I said, it's nothing new. It's not Washington-driven. This is just letting kids know, you know, what they might earn in high school that could help them for a lifetime. So I encourage your support.
Danny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so you, you have the facts to show me that they are more proficient in high school? Do you have that information?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, I, I know I'm just a small business owner, but usually if a kid wanted to be a technician, we'd put them to work and then we'd go through some process, and we'd pay for them to get their degree. And we never put any thumb on them about that you had to work for us for two years, or you had to pay us back or anything like that. Because our culture was, they wanted to stay there and go to work. So I'm, I'm struggling back and forth because I, there's a lot of businesses out there that will hire the young people that want to be in those professions and pay for them to get education, not federal government, or not even state government paying for those things.
Dina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Part of the reason that the credential is being, being supported is because there are students who finish these programs and do not have the money personally to actually get the credential. And they haven't had someone hire them, or they've not made that connection. So this is intended to help those students who are impoverished, who seriously, we, you actually could hear from an individual who would tell you that's how this all came about. And it was her recommendation. And so they've kind of married to her idea with another idea. So with that information, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve a list of industry SOC credentials outlined in Senate Bill 123, new Section 10, and a list of high-value industry-recognized career and technical education credentials, and a list of standard career and technical education industry-recognized credentials for substitute for House Bill 2466, new Section 7.
Second from Buddy. Okay. Further discussion? Danny, I've got you on my list.
Yes. How do we know they're staying in Kansas? If this is for Kansas industry, how do we know they're, they're staying in Kansas?
Students, you talked about application of skill, which I think is great, allowing them to work in their home community. When we think about students understanding the occupations in their home community, if they get a chance to realize the opportunities, I think the likelihood of them staying is much greater than if they don't have those opportunities to know that something they're passionate about is available in their own community or in their own state. I think it's really important to provide those real-world, authentic experiences and interactions with business and industry so that they, they have that, and that they know that they could have an occupation that's high wage, that would provide a sustainable future for them and their families right there in Kansas in their own communities.
Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So how, how are the, the businesses then? Why are the businesses, which they've done for years and years, doing, doing that on their own? With, with the, they wouldn't even have to work with the school. They reach out to, I mean, if it's a community, they would, like Jay's Pizza, you work for Jay's Pizza, and then you say, gosh, I'd like to own a pizza place. I mean, that, that guy has to do everything. He has to be human resources. He has to hire. He has to schedule. There's a lot of business associated with just owning your own business. And a kid working there would see all the workings of that just by getting a part-time job. We can't get people to work part-time jobs because we're, we're kind of working with, we're doing volunteering, like we're doing pathways where they're just getting experience without getting paid, where if they got hired on there, there would be a lot more responsibility on that individual, that, that family, that, uh, business themselves that has invested in that kid. They're, like she said, a lot of times they, they'll go back and pay for their, they'll pay for their education or pay for that extra credential to come on, to come back, or their master degree or whatever, because they've taken invested interest in that child within that community where they live rather than work, doing volunteer work or working on a pathway during school time that it's, well, I, I won't go on. There's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff with, with, with volunteering and things that we're being asked to do rather than doing on their own. And then it becomes a program with honors, honor society, all that kind of stuff. There's a lot of issues I have with things because it's, 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 it's pre-programmed at the school rather than somebody on an individual basis going out and doing that on their own and seeking that on their own, and that interest on their own. The community, the businesses should be reaching out in that, in that capacity rather than the school trying to, to provide that, that pathway for them. That's just my opinion. We've done that for, we've done that for years and years, and it's cha, it's changing, in my opinion.
Thank you. I might say a comment. I know, living in Western Kansas and growing up in Western Kansas, I know we hear there's obstacles, whether you're small or whether you're large. Sometimes there may not be those businesses that the student, and so sometimes the post-secondary credit and some of those experiences can help that student and what they're passionate about. I mean, business and industry, yes. I mean, we, we must have them. But whether you're large and all your students can get out, it provides a different avenue to have those post-secondary programs and the experiences and allowing the students to have that real-world application.
Sorry, they're interrupting. So if you have a specific pathway, are you going to even get an interview with that business unless you've gotten that credential? Or you've gotten, gone through that specific pathway? My concern is that we're having certain businesses that are getting favored over other businesses because we're picking shoes and winners and losers based off what the business and industry is driving. Uh, that, I mean, I'm, I can see, I can see that right now just from the list that's growing. Are you going, and, and from going out online and just looking at, um, top, top four accounting firms? If you look at, just to get on there and get an internship, you have to have specific, so specific things that have actually reversed, excuse me, reversed what we want. We want everybody to be able to have that opportunity, and they've got it down so specific that you have to have these specific things that we recommend before you can even get a, an opportunity to get a job at that company. And, and that's, that's wrong in itself. So I'm just like, I could go on and on on this stuff, but I, I, it's, it's, it's too much to discuss and, and pass it in one, in one day, in my opinion, in 24 hours.
Two more. Dina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Part of the discussion that we're hearing right now, this is a bill. This was legislation. And my concern is that we're discussing the legislation. And if you have a concern about the legislation, I think the best place to take that concern is across the street. So, um, I still stand with my motion.
Benny, further discussion, and then we'll move to vote.
I'm appreciative of that. Thank you. The comment I want to make to Board members, and, and it's good to have this robust conversation where people get to state their opinions. But the one thing I want to remind the Board of, you know, you can talk about specific children and their background and, and where they're going. But when we talk about meeting all students' needs, we're trying to educate all students. I will remind you that there are some programs that may be more beneficial to students that you may not take into consideration. As an example, if you have that family tie and you can help get your student on a career path, and you can specify, these are the kinds of things that you need to know. As an example, um, if you want to be a doctor, then yeah, you need to get more science. You need to get more math. You need, and it's great when you have those skills to help your child. But I will remind you that not every student in the state of Kansas But I will remind you that not every student in the state of Kansas has such wonderful and great parents that can provide that pathway, that can help them identify a pathway. One of the things that education has done is to step in that void, to help many students see, this is the path that you will take if you are interested in this career. I had the opportunity to be in a classroom where an industry talked about the jobs that they offered. Kids were so excited and engaged, and they said, what kinds of subjects should I be taking to prepare for this? Because they didn't know, their families didn't know, and so they relied on the schools. What I've seen is that many students become more engaged once that pathway has been established or identified for them. If I need more math, if I need more this, I'm going to take that. So I am just asking, as we get ready to vote, that we remember, we're not talking about just those students who have families or know of businesses that can help them. We are talking about some students that may not have that offering. One of the things I mentioned about students that, from the economical standpoint, students that are in the foster care system, students of certain racial backgrounds, we need to be concerned that we are meeting their needs as well, and I'm hoping that you will take that into consideration as we move to vote on this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Board members, are we ready to vote? Any further discussion?
Jim is online. I don't know how attentive he is or whether he's in baggage claim. I don't know.
I just saw him. Jim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
There, there he is.
Okay, all right.
We got the top of your head. All right. We have a motion in a second for agenda item number four on Wednesday. All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, seven. Jim?
Aye.
Aye. That's eight. Opposed? Two. Danny, Michelle? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 10:42.
On the robust discussion that we had, there's a lot that folks on the board don't understand or know about career and tech ed evidently. I mean, in the discussion, I heard a lot of misinformation about career paths, about how we work with business to develop these things. And I really think one of our workshop things should be on career paths, what they are, how they work. In fact, I'd recommend specifically, we bring Mike Gibson in, who works with Build Up Kansas. He's one of those folks who's working to help schools get the tools and things they need to help kids with CTE so that they get good jobs and stay in Kansas. That's their whole point. They want kids to stay and work and be successful in Kansas. And I think it's those kind of partnerships maybe the board's not aware of how we really do work with business. And we do that primarily through the Advisory Committee on Career and Tech Ed where our business partners come in and help us develop career paths based on Kansas business needs. So I think it's just a great discussion, and we kind of know where everybody is. But I think now we need to bring in the facts and say, what are we really doing with career paths? I mean, I don't want CAPS shut down. CAPS is amazing. And it's there because we have a career path. So anyway, you know, we need to, I think it's a good discussion. We just need to continue when we have more time and can lay things out. Thank you.
Thanks for the request. All right, we will now go to Scott Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Craig Nineswander is here with me also, although I did not give him credit on the slide. Sorry, Craig. So you may have heard stories that there are a couple of school districts in Kansas that are considering disorganizing themselves. There is a provision in law that authorizes people living within a school district to do that. It's my understanding that as of today, there is one petition that has actually been filed and will be up for election in August. The other petition exists but has not been filed. So we want to take this opportunity to just kind of generically explain to the State Board and recommend to the State Board what your role in this will be and the process. For a couple of you, this will be the third time that you will have heard this. Craig and I got to go on a little road show, was that last week or two weeks ago? Couple of weeks ago, and I got to visit USD 112. I'd never been out there before. Took a picture of a huge egg while I was out there. If you've never been, it's kind of a cool thing to see. And visit with them. So this is kind of a repeat of that, probably more generically than what we addressed out there. So by way of background understanding, there are actually two methods in state law to disorganize a school district. The first method to disorganize a school district. And by disorganize, I may sometimes use the term dissolve. Essentially, it's the same thing. It means the school district goes away. The first method by which that may occur is if the locally elected school board decides that they don't need to have a school board anymore. They don't need to have their own district. They can have a petition that they submit to the State Board of Education. There's a request with those petitions to attach the territory and the buildings in it to one or more neighboring districts. In other words, there's kind of a plan that's already laid out in those petitions. If those conditions are met, conditions being they're laid out in statute, I won't read them all to you, but they are in state statute that says the petition has to include X, Y, and Z, must describe the territory and the buildings and the full plan. If the statutory conditions are met, then the State Board issues your order effective July 1 following the date of the petition. So if the petition were to be filed today under these circumstances, it would not go into effect until July 1 of 2024. Within the order, the State Board would attach the school district territory to one or more of the school districts, whatever the plan was, as well as disposing of any of the property that's owned by the former school district that is real and not unreal, just there's property and then real property. Real property generally refers to as buildings, something that would have a deed or a title to it. When that occurs, here are the effective dates. The transferred territory attaches as of December 1 following the effective July 1. So again, if a petition were to be filed today under these circumstances, the following July 1 would be July 1, 2024. Then you back up to December 31, 2023. That is when for tax purposes, the new districts or the reorganized districts go into effect. For election purposes, and this is going to be a little bit different, I believe, than the second method, the disorganization becomes effective on the date of the order of the State Board. Which means, if your order were to be issued, say, October 1 of 2023, if for election purposes, the disorganization becomes effective on the date of the order, then the individuals within the reorganized school districts would be voting in that November within their new school district. That is very different than what I'm going to share with you on the second method. The second method is petition by election. And this is an election that is called for by the city election officer. If there is enough, I think you have to have 20% of the registered voters within the school district have to sign the petition. They file it in the county election office in the county where the headquarters for the school district are. If there's enough signatures, then they put it forward for an election. If the majority of the voters approve it, simple majority, then the county election office, officer, pardon me, sends a notification to you. You are then, shall, or you are ordered, if you will, by statute to order the dissolution of the school district. And within that order, again, just like the other one, it attaches the school district territory to one or more appropriate school districts. And also, you will have to describe what to do with the property. Here's the major difference in the problem. Well, we'll get to that in a second. Again, for tax purposes, that transferred territory attaches as of the December 1 preceding the July 1. The voting is a little bit different in this method of disorganization. If hypothetically speaking, there were an election to take place in, oh, I don't know, August, and then you were to receive notification from the county election office letting you know that you needed to disorganize a school district. At some point, you would come up with your order. That order would take some time to come up with. We'll explain the details shortly. Let's say you come up with an order in February of 2024, disorganizing the school district. That order would go into effect that July 1. But the issuance of the order took place in February. There's the issuance, then there's the effective date. This being the issuance of the order being that in February, if that's what happens. Add 120 days from when that order is issued, that is when the residents will be voting in their new school districts. Bond issues, it's you add 60 days from the issuance of the order. If we ever get there, this is going to be explained in much greater detail. I'm just letting you know that there are some provisions that are laid out in statute as to what happens to the voters, what happens to bond issues. As far as outstanding bonds and debts, Craig will explain that to you at the end, because he's smarter than me, and I don't understand it still. Here's the somewhat difficulty. The only thing that is described in statute is in 72-635, where it says if the majority of those voters vote in the favor of disorganization, the county election officer shall notify the State Board of Education and shall issue its order disorganizing the school district. That's all it says. It doesn't say how you're supposed to come up with that order. It does indicate that it must be consistent with the rest of the school unification laws, which the Reader's Digest version is that you try to keep the borders as contiguous as possible, and that the property or the buildings that are within the territory belong to the school district that has that territory. To assist, you have another statute, 62-740, that authorizes the State Board of Education to appoint, generally, not just for these types of cases, but generally, you can appoint a hearing officer, which is an employee of the Department of Education, if you want to. I would say that for land transfer cases, you've had a hearing officer appointed for 10 and a half years. So you have had hearing officers in the past for the Professional Practices Commission, for example. There is an appointed hearing officer that assists. But just like the PPC, the hearing officer comes up with a recommendation based on after gathering all that information, and then provides that to the State Board for the State Board to make its final decision. The State Board can, based on that written report, and again, I'm not going to read the statute to you, but it is up there on the slide, you can decide, well, we have enough information, we can vote on this. Or you can say, well, we need more information. We need more of a hearing. You can follow the hearing officer's recommendations. You can decide not to follow the hearing officer's recommendations and come up with your own. This should all sound very familiar because you did it yesterday. I mean, it's happened, and it's fine. Not bitter at all. Fair enough. So it is important to note that there's nothing in the back, or nothing, nothing within the statute that requires you to appoint a hearing officer or to have a hearing. You don't have to go that route. You could just decide to have every resident of Wilson come forward and tell you where they should go. Go ahead. Let me know how that works out for you. That is why, fortunately, the statute allows you to appoint a hearing officer and put it off on his or her shoulders to come up with that recommendation for you. Even if you have a different opinion, you can certainly go your own route. Some people tell you, it's a good idea. Some would not. So trying to figure out how to come about, coming up with an order for disorganization, we look at other statutes that do have more of a methodology laid out for you. And in 72-532, that describes the process to transfer school territory. Now, there is a difference between dissolving a school district and an order that is to transfer school territory. Transferring school territory assumes that the giving and the receiving districts still exist afterwards. You're not changing any of the authority. You're just saying, you know what, these 20 square miles that used to be in this district, well, it turns out the students have been going to the neighboring district for a generation or more, so why don't we just start collecting that tax revenue? And why don't we make it easier to provide transportation to the students? That's the type of situation that generally results in asking for the transfer of school territory. That statute does provide for order of the State Board following the public hearing with an appointed hearing officer, if there needs to be a hearing. And it does provide a non-existent list of considerations. Given the fact that they are similar in result, that's why we're sharing them with you. Some of the considerations for disorganization, these are within statute. These are also some of the considerations that are in prior orders from the State Board. I don't believe anyone here has actually been a part of a hearing for transferring school territory. There's only been a mutual agreement, in which case, you don't have a hearing in that case. So some considerations that will probably be brought to you by the hearing officer. What are the available capacities of the districts to serve additional or the existing students? What are the conditions? And what are the ages of the buildings, not only to be transferred, but the buildings that are already in the school district? What are some overall costs of building renovation, if that is going to be an issue? What would be the cost of busing, both before and after transportation or after disorganization? And then what are the food service options? Do you have one school district that has a very strong food service program versus one that does not? And how will expanding a neighboring school district, for example, impact the ability to provide these services? Additional information, which I believe would need to be obtained by the hearing officer in order to make an accurate recommendation for the State Board. At the very least, the State Board is going to need to know this information to issue its orders. We will need certified boundary descriptions of not only the disorganized school district, but also the neighboring districts before or and after any proposed changes. I get requests probably weekly saying, hey, what's the exact description of our boundary? And so we're going to need to know exactly, well, is this property within the boundary or not? We'll also need to know the estimated land value and the tax revenue to be acquired by the receiving districts, as well as what will the expenses be to the receiving districts based on the proposal, and probably going to need to know the population, at least by grade level, of the students to be reallocated. That's all going to be information that will have to be collected by the hearing officer. As far as the timeline, fortunately, there is no specific deadline set in law. What I've explained to others is it will take as long as it takes. If this can be done in one day, we would do it all in one day. That's not likely. It's probably going to take several months to get this done. It just will. What I will share with you is, so I'm, I do the hearing officer, I'm the hearing officer for land transfers. Whenever we get a petition to transfer land, even if it is, or transfer territory, pardon me, even if it's mutually agreed upon, the two districts that are involved say, this is exactly what we want. It's very simple. Please get this approved by the State Board. I tell them the deadline is the middle of February. It has, because we want you to vote on that prior to July 1, right? So it has to be voted on at least by June, if not earlier. Because that's how long it takes to go back and forth and try to correct and answer some of the questions that naturally come up with these petitions, to make sure they have all of the information I know that the State Board, or I believe the State Board, is going to want to know. Plus, the process of getting it on your agenda and having all the materials put together. So the fact that that's a very simple process, and if we get them by February, that is okay, and it's in place by July 1, that gives you an idea of how long sometimes this takes. I'm going to assume that the dissolution of a school district, which, by the way, we have not found any record of ever happening by electors. This is why we don't have something set in stone for you. So it may require more than one hearing. I don't anticipate this being a one-shot opportunity to show up in the community or communities and receiving public feedback. This is going to be more of a period, right, of collecting public comment, reaching out to the school districts, both the disorganized and the neighboring districts to find out as much info as we can. But we certainly will reach out to district officials. The hearing officer will reach out to KSDE officials, and most importantly, perhaps, give the public an opportunity to be heard. As far as the transfer of property, Craig, I think this is your territory if you want to start talking about this. And then I will try to come back up and answer some of the rumors and theories that we've heard of what people think this means. And so I might as well share with you all. Do you want to do that now, or you want to do it after? Well, I'll just make it easier. I'll go and do it now, I guess, Madam Chair, if that's okay. Some of the rumors that we've, we've heard, because again, this has been, well, you heard from someone yesterday that addressed you about potential disorganization. If a school district disorganizes, what happens to the school buildings that are within that territory? It's our reading of the law that essentially, that is left entirely at the discretion of the receiving school district. Because functionally, if you disorganize a school district, you disorganize the school board, there's nobody that owns and operates that building as a school. It's like when you close a business. When they go out of business, it's not a business anymore. It would be at the discretion of the receiving school district to decide whether to reopen that or open that as a school building. The other rumor was, well, the State Board will just, they'll send a petition or they'll send a questionnaire to everyone in the school district to find out where they want to live. Probably not. I won't outright say no, but no, that's probably not going to happen. We'll, people have, be given the opportunity to say, look, I would really, well, I want to stay in this district. I don't want to be in the neighboring district, and I know that I'm probably right on the border of what you're proposing. Okay, fine. Public comment will certainly be accepted. But there's no guarantee that where people want to be is where they're going to end up. I will tell you in all candor that I kind of advised USD 112, that there is a chance, and I don't know that it would be intentional, but there's a chance that the person that they were sitting next to during these meetings may not be in their school district as a result of the organization order of the State Board. It just depends on where the boundaries may be. Other rumors. Oh, well, why can't the State Board of Education just create a new school district? Why can't you just fire our locally elected school board and give us an opportunity to elect new people? Because there's no provision in law that allows you to do that. The state laws that have been in the books at least since the 50s and 60s favor unification and, and basically condensing, consolidating school districts. There is a means by which you could consolidate school districts, right, which is essentially what this becomes. But there is no means in statute or regulation to just outright create a new school district. So it's, it's not an option. Teacher contracts, what happens to the teachers that are working in a particular school district? And again, keep in mind, these comments are not just specifically to 112 or 113 or any other. These are just generic comments I would make. Again, if you vote to disorganize the local district, and they functionally go out of business, they are no, you don't have an employer anymore. You know that as of June 30 of whatever year, you don't have an employer. There may be something in a negotiated agreement, but I don't deal with that world, so I don't even know how that would be possible. But chances are, the people that used to work in a building, that school gets assigned to a neighboring district, it would be up to that neighboring district to decide, one, whether to operate that school, and if they do, who they're going to hire, and what kind of programs they're going to operate. That would be entirely outside of the jurisdiction, and I think probably of the State Board. Any other rumors that you could think of that came up that we want to address? Oh, that was a good one. There was someone that asked the question, well, I heard that for amount of time, that the State Board of Education would just take over the district and run it for a while. Probably more strenuously than I should have responded. I made it very clear, I think, that, no, that's not going to happen. There's no method to do that. I spoke on your behalf and said, you don't want to do that. So no, that's just not a thing either. Madam Chair, well, Craig, you may answer some questions before they even ask them. So if you want to come up and talk about transfer of property and debt.
So when we talk about education, frequently, money is the minor issue, and this is one of those times. But for some who were preparing to vote in 112, they did have some just questions. What happens if? So if the vote is yes to disorganize a school district, and Scott touched on this earlier, the real property of building, for instance, goes with the land that's transferred to the receiving district. So if Wilson, for instance, were transferred to Ellsworth, the buildings in Wilson go to Ellsworth. And as Scott mentioned, what happens to them is up to the Ellsworth School District. But that's just logical. The issue that comes up is what about other things, like primarily the money? So we've got money left in our cash balance. What happens to that? If the disorganized district, 112 is the one that's having the vote in this case, if they are split into several different, and moved to several different districts, then the money is divided in the same proportion as the assessed valuation of the property that's moved. So if it's split three ways, and one comprises 30%, the other piece is 50%, and the final piece would be 20%, then 30% of the money goes with the first piece, 50% of the money goes to the district that gets the second piece, and so forth. But it's, it's determined by assessed valuation of that property, not by the number of students living in that area. So that applies to any additional property or funds that are used.
I think we've got a quick question. Danny? Do you want to wait?
Probably wait.
Okay.
Okay. And again, as Scott pointed out, most of this is not a big concern for you to work with right now. It may not even be a factor in your decision, but it's one that the patrons were interested in and might be if a decision has to be made about where they're going. So general fund budgets, you may remember from our discussion a month or two ago about how school district budgets work, there is low enrollment weighting that's assigned to each school district, and that's a factor that's multiplied times each of your students so that you receive additional money. The smaller your district is, the smaller your enrollment, the higher the factor. So it's helping offset the fact that Wichita can hire teachers much easier for chemistry class than you can if you've only got 100 kids in your high school. So it allows you to compensate for economies of scale a little bit. A number of years ago, the legislature recognized that, to a certain extent, loss of low enrollment weighting when you consolidate, because now you went from 150 students to 300, so that means I'm going to get less low enrollment weightings per student when I consolidated those two districts, is somewhat of a disincentive. It's working against districts trying to consolidate. So they put a change in statute, and it's that first section you're reading up there. It works the same way for a disorganized district. If they vote to disorganize, if the entire district, in this case, if all of USD 112 is assigned to one other district, then they follow the same procedure that you do for a consolidation. And that is their, their general fund budgets are combined, and the number of years they're combined would depend on the enrollment in the district that they're assigned to. In statute, it's written out, it's three years if you're 150 or fewer students. If you're 150 up to some other number, I think maybe 300, it's four years and so forth. So they, they don't lose their low enrollment weighting. For a few years, it gives them a chance to plan for what happens when our budget drops like that. Because there are Because there are a number of things budgetarily that become issues when you're trying to combine two districts like that. On the other hand, if they're split into multiple districts, or I'm sorry, multiple territories, and they're assigned to a number of receiving districts, each receiving district keeps the combined general fund, and the amount of the general fund from 112 would be, again, determined based on the proportion of the assessed valuation they got assigned to them. But they only keep it for one year in that situation. And that's about it. Oh, bonds. Question comes up about bonds. For what it's worth, USD 112 does not have any bonds active. They haven't, there, any bonds they had have been paid. However, the question was raised at one of our meetings because they might be assigned to a district that does have bonds. So, if I'm in a territory that gets assigned to another district that's paying off a bond, I'm not responsible for paying for that bond. Paying the bond remains the responsibility of those patrons who had a chance to vote on that bond election originally. So, it doesn't become the responsibility of any new territory. Questions for you and one of us?
No pressure. You can skip.
Well, okay, so, if a, if a school district, I'll probably need both of you. If a school district closes a building in another town and then sells that building to a private individual, and in the meantime, that particular school district, not school district, but place where the building was sold, makes a deal with another school district, all their students go there, but doesn't have any control over the building, can, can that school district still open that building and not have to, if they make an agreement with that private individual, that they don't have to take care of that particular building, but they have, they work out a contract, a business contract, that that private individual will keep, upkeep the school and stuff, but that those kids can go to school there as long as they keep the standards up? Is that legally possible, or is that, am I in la la land?
I'm not sure I followed it entirely, so let me, let me try to repeat that.
Okay. Sorry if I didn't make sense.
District A closes a school in an outlined community, smaller community within the district. The students begin attending District B. Did the land transfer, or did just the students go to District B? They close the school, does District A still own the school and the land and everything?
District A is still open to school.
Okay.
I mean, they still have their buildings and everything.
Students just chose to go to school in a different district.
Yeah, and they sold the building to a private individual.
District A sold the building to a private individual.
And that, that particular place that they sold the building to worked, works out a deal with another school district to send all their kids to that school district, or keeps that open.
District B would not have any authority to have a school operating in another school district's territory. And right now, that building still sits in the territory of District A.
And doesn't the state now have right of first refusal?
Right. The other issue that cloudies it now, District A can't just directly sell the building to a private individual or anybody else without first offering it to the legislature and giving them the opportunity to find a state agency that might want that building. Am I leaking anything out of that?
Danny, for clarity, was that, does that go in the rumors column from the previous slides? Was that, does that go in the rumors column? Was that something that someone was asking?
No, no, this, this is another school district.
Trying to understand.
I am familiar with the theory that he's going with.
And I know you all are familiar with it, but I, I just, I mean, that made me, talking about this made me start thinking. But that's scary when I start thinking.
Any other questions?
You can't set me up like that and then not, okay.
Dennis?
Had a lot of conversation with constituents there in 112, and, you know, both communities are really on emotional alert, alert over this. And I understood, I think, Scott, you said when you were visiting out there that there's no guarantee. I mean, if this disorganization happens, that the districts that, if we would divide up the district, be new boundaries according to taxation or whatever evaluation in that new district, in other words, any, any school in that district could be closed by the new districts. I mean, all of a sudden, they have new authority to do that.
So, to clarify something, because I think this is a big question. And to be, so, the process for closing a school district is, is written out in statute, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds on it because I don't want to. But I, I use the phrase, "open" or reopen the school rather than close. It is entirely up to the receiving school district to decide whether to open that building. Because I consider it, again, this is just my layperson's explanation to you all generically. You may disagree. You may come up with your own solution. It's like if you, and I explained this to, I said the same thing at least twice. If you close a Radio Shack, like Radio Shack, when they went completely out of business and could put all the Radio Shacks stopped being Radio Shacks. Now, Spirit Halloween may have come in the next day and reopened that as something else, or someone else may have decided to open up their own radio store, Radio Hut. But that was still at the discretion of the new person that owned that. It was not necessarily a Radio Shack still, just because it used to be one. And so, the long, the shorter way of answering your question, Dennis, is, yes, there is a possibility that if there is a school, I'm trying to keep this as generic possible because we don't want to prejudge anything or assume we know what's going to happen in any particular school district. A, there's no guarantee that a school that is being operated in a building today would remain being operated as a school building by the receiving school district as of July 1 a year from now. Did that answer your question, or I danced around it enough?
Yes, and I think that was, I think that was hard for some people to hear.
Yeah.
Which, but that's reality. The other thing is, our responsibility as a board, the hearing officer goes out, and they, they have all of the community input, and how does the taxation, how, when you talk about boundaries, someone sitting next to somebody in that meeting, you may be in a different district. Can you, can you simply tell us what our responsibility would be? And when you come back to, whoever the hearing officer is, comes back to us, says, "This is what we recommend." There's going to be, the district, 112 is going to be, all this land is going to be divided up, and these boundaries, this is what we recommend as boundaries. Do we have any say as to, well, we think that ought to be moved two miles, that one boundary, because we know these people, or that, we've had conversation with them ourselves?
Ultimately, you are the elected officials. It's your name on the door. So, you will be the ones to make that decision. And you can come back and say, "Look, I understand what the recommendation is. I'm, I think the State Board should, instead of setting the boundary here, it should be here." Yeah, you could do that.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, had one constituent tell me that they're now, you know, like within 200 feet of, I mean, it's, it's really close, you know. And like you said, it, you know, it's just property and taxation and whatever evaluations that come down.
Yeah, most likely, well, I don't even want to say. It's not just the taxation and value of the property that will decide what the boundaries are. The boundaries that exist now are one of two things. There may have been natural boundaries, rivers, mountain ranges, whatever, in Kansas. Major highways that may county lines. Farmer A wanted his 500 acres over here, and Farmer B wanted acres here, so they just went down the line between the two. That's how most of your school boundaries are in Kansas. Those same kinds of considerations are probably going to be what the new boundaries would be based on. Not 100%, I'm just, that's why I give you this list. And, and I do have a longer list of considerations that you kind of look at of a totality of circumstances to decide what's in the best interest, not only in that community, but for Kansas schools as a whole. I did make the comment and explain to someone at one of the, one of the buildings. I understand that you may be considering your immediate family needs. Now, you've got a family of three kids. You want them to finish high school altogether. Fair, fair enough. But this is a decision that's probably going to be standing around for, I mean, we've never done this, and let's think, maybe five decades? I mean, these, these boundaries may be in place for 50 years. These people may not even live in that town after the kids are finished with high school. So, those are all things that the State Board will consider. But ultimately, yeah, it's, it is up to you all.
And, and just to clarify, if the vote is no on August 1st, nothing changes.
This has all been a fun conversation, but nothing happens. Yeah. It's been informative for future act. How about that?
Yeah, the other thing that rarely gets talked about, whether it happens or not, the entire district could be put somewhere, or the district could be split up. I, we often talk about the district being split up, but it's, there's one. I mean, the entire district could be assigned to another district. So, let's just, just remember that, too.
I don't see any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our next agenda item is to discuss options and approve the fiscal year '25 budget recommendations to the Governor. Craig, and I'll just ask board members real quick. Do we need a break right now? I know our schedule's pretty out of, okay. Carry on. Welcome, again.
Well, there we go. So, while we're getting the PowerPoint set, I will be joined briefly, or at least, that was the intention, by John Hass and Dale Brungart. I'm not sure what their schedules looked like this morning. They may be involved with other, oh, here comes John. The, so, the Board, as we discussed last month, has the responsibility every year of making budget recommendations to the Governor. Those recommendations actually come to us. We develop them, send them to the Division of the Budget. They then present them to the Governor. The Governor presents them to the Legislature, and that becomes part of the legislation that is discussed as it works through the session this coming winter and spring. So, we just started fiscal year '24. So, what we're talking about this morning are budget recommendations for fiscal year '25, so a year from now. So, we're not looking at the budget that we're going to be dealing with for the rest of this year, but what are the options that you would like to have considered a year down the road that the Legislature could discuss when they come back into session? And we typically refer a lot to statute, what the statute require funding to be. Is that being done or not? And there's one or two places, and I'll try to point those out, where it's not necessarily tied to statute, particularly as we get a little further into the recommendation. And most of this should be a review of what you saw last month, so I'll try not to belabor it too long with you. So, first up, base aid for the general fund. And, and Madam Chair, I probably should have asked, we've done this a number of ways over the years. Do you want me to go through all of this and come back for any questions and motions at that time? Or do you want, how, or do you want to handle them as we go through each fund?
I feel like last year, we, we handled them as we went. Didn't we vote as, yeah. So, let's do that again.
Well, not only that, but having been over there during the Gannon case, I think when you have a separate vote on every one of them, it helps clarify it to any potential future court to what the vote was on that piece, which can matter, so.
All right. So, school district general fund is tied to the base very much, and the base is being funded according to statute. Those numbers you see until you get to '23, '24 were actually written in statute for the last several years, the specific number. And now, it's based on the three-year average of the Consumer Price Index, which, for this coming year, '23, '24 sets the base at $5,088. That's about a 5% increase. Next year, and don't set this in stone because we won't know the three-year Consumer Price Index average until next April. But right now, the estimate is it would be $5,388, about a 5.9% increase. So, that is being funded according to statute and has been for several years now. That just gives you an idea of the dollar amount. If, if we fund that base, what does it appear to? Just remind you, in case you're looking at the numbers closer later, as I buzz through them, why is it a smaller amount this year than it was last year when the base went up? So, '24 is a smaller amount. A year ago, actually, just a few weeks ago, they changed a historical practice for a number of years and actually paid all of the state aid in the current school year. They had delayed the last payment for a number of years as a money-saving issue. Since the state had a large cash balance, they didn't need to delay that anymore. So, they're now caught up. So, as a result, this year's state aid is the actual amount that should be needed for this year, as opposed to part for this year and part for the prior year. And then you see the estimate for what would happen in 2025. And if you had any suggestions or changes you would like to make, we would take that at this time.
Anne?
Madam Chair, since the recommendation here meets the court order and the law, I rec, I would move that the State Board approve the base aid for student excellence and state foundation aid, as shown on page two.
A second for Betty. Discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Jim? Yay or nay? Jim McNeese online? We're working on it, Jim. What's that? Oh, he's muted. Okay. Jim, you're muted. Got him? He could also put it in the chat.
Said yes.
All right. We have a yes vote from Jim McNeese, so that's 10-0. Motion passes. Thank you.
Supplemental general fund, supplemental state aid, also known as a local option budget. So, you'll hear it referred to as LOB quite often. There's the history of the amount. That is the fund that school districts have that they can add a percentage of the general fund to create this fund, is a short way of describing it, up to 33%. And that also changes with the base. As the base increases, then the general fund gets larger, so 33% of that amount gets larger as well. You'll see, again, that in '23, '24, the dollar amount dropped. That's also been subject to that late state aid payment in July that was taken care of this year. And that is currently funded according to law and has been for some time now.
Any discussion? Motion to, Dennis?
Craig, what is the, what's the liability on the, on the USD? I mean, a local option budget, I've always been a little confused by it. Craig, what, what is the, uh, what's the liability on the, on the USD? I mean, a local option budget, I've always been a little confused by that.
They, originally, they decided entirely whether to have a local option budget or not. Now they are required to have at least a 15% local option budget. Uh, and anything above that is up to the board and they can change their mind every year, how much of a percentage they, they'd like to have.
Is this?
They're, they are all over, I don't know about 25, but certainly over 20.
So i- is it, is it per, how is it, um, figured? I mean, how do they look at their need? How's that identified?
That's identified based on their programs, on their staffing, on, uh, not necessarily physical needs because that's more capital outlay and bond and interest, uh, but programs and staffing primarily. Initially, this is more than you maybe wanted to know. Uh, it was put in place in 92 when the law changed. Uh, because at that time, beginning in 92, then your general fund was set based on the number of students you had. Prior to that, that hadn't been a cap on you. Uh, and so a number of districts were used to being able to fund more programs than what the new law allowed. They were used to having more money. So the legislature put the supplemental general fund in place as a way for those districts to add programs above and beyond the basics. The general fund was supposed to cover the basics. And the theory at the time actually was the need for the LOB would go away as the general fund kept increasing. It would catch up with those districts. That's not what's happened as we indicated. Everybody has an LOB well over 20%.
Okay. I, um, this is of interest to me because I had a superintendent kind of warn me in, you know, one of my districts that they have a lot of housing coming in that is going to probably add 2,000, as many as 2,000 students over the next 10 years. I mean.
So that will increase their general fund and their supplemental general fund. It'll also bring some property tax base for the district, although houses generally don't run it up real high.
Kathy?
Thank you. Um, so does the school district, so they decide the percentage that they're going to have that LOB sitting at?
Typically, they decide how many dollars do we need to fund the programs that are in place? And then you do the math to back into what percentage is that.
And that's what they request?
Um, that's what they adopt. The, the local board makes that decision entirely. They adopt that for their budget. And I say they back into the percent. There is a cap on the largest percent they can have, but other than that.
But I'm saying then they come to the state saying this is what?
This is, this is what our budget is. And funding on the LOB, uh, state aid occurs if your property tax valuation divided by the number of students is small enough, then you receive state aid. If it's very large, then you fund it entirely on your own from property tax. So it's a, it's a floating, again, sliding scale.
So it is state aid. I'm, I'm missing that. It's state aid if need.
There is, everybody has property tax involved. A lot of, most districts have state aid. Some have no state aid. It's all property tax.
Betty?
I move that the state board of education approve the supplemental state aid, um, local option budgets, uh, as presented for the fiscal year 2025 budget options.
Dina seconds. Further discussion? All in favor? Nine. Jim McNeese, raise your hand. Are you waving?
He's gonna text me.
He's gonna text Randy. Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Jim. So that's a 10-0. Motion passes.
All right. Uh-oh, didn't move. Eric, I seem to be frozen. There we go. Capital improvement state aid, uh, most commonly referred to as bond and interest. So if you pass a bond election and you're making principal and interest payments, uh, the state will provide state aid to offset that. And I should have mentioned, all of the state aid programs are intended uh, to provide equity for taxpayers. So that it does, it shouldn't matter quite as much where you live in terms of your mill rate. It's not perfect, but, but it helps. So for bond and interest, um, the law has changed quite a bit since 2015 a number of times. So the, uh, percentage of state aid that a district qualifies for has dropped significantly. Uh, this year it's about 46% lower than it would have been in, prior to 2015. And it's tied to when you had your election. Having said that, uh, there are still, since most bond elections are paid off over 20 years, there are still a number of elections that were held prior to 2015 that are being paid for. But we probably will see that state aid amount start to decrease a little bit as we move forward. It is being funded according to law and you see the, the dollar amounts there and our estimates for 24, 25.
Discussion? Questions? Ann.
It was Danny's turn, but anyway, I move that the state board of education approve the capital improvement state aid, bond and interest state aid as proposed.
Second from Betty. Further discussion? All in favor? Got nine in the room. Ann, Jim?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wasn't good enough, I guess.
10-0, motion passes.
Capital outlay is the fund that school districts maintain for repairs, maintenance of buildings. And depending on the size, maybe you could do a small construction project for a very small building. Uh, it is limited. School districts, the highest they can go is eight mills. Uh, most have eight-mill authority, but not all. And the, again, the board decides every year whether eight mills will raise the amount of money they need or do we just need six mills this year? Um, so those decisions are made when they adopt the budget each year. For that reason, since there's a cap, um, you'll see state aid and the amount of that budget grows basically with assessed valuation. As assessed valuation increases, then eight mills raise more money. And if my state aid is 25%, then my state aid's going to go up proportionally as well. So that, that increase that you see is tied primarily to assessed valuation in the state. And it is funded according to law.
Craig, I have a question. When I look at my documents from two years ago, the projected, I guess the allocated for 22, 23 as an example, was 8,900,000. And that obviously changed with inflation, if I can say that word. Is this something that we need to be concerned about as we think about the cost of maintenance and grounds? Those types of expenditures?
School districts need to be concerned with it for the costs that they're going to be spending. The amount of, uh, revenue that they can generate has changed, uh, quite a bit as assessed valuations increase, particularly the last two or three years when we've seen such a big jump.
Because I'm looking at a difference of, what, $8 million almost?
Yes.
So, over a couple of years. Okay. Questions? Discussion? Motion? Dina?
I move that we approve or recommend the capital outlay state aid be funded according to the law in fiscal year 2025.
Second from Betty. Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. I think that's nine. Jim?
Yes.
Yes, all right. 10-0.
Juvenile detention facilities are funded a little bit differently because we're talking about residential, uh, facilities for students. So their funding is twice the base amount. And it's based on the, uh, enrollment in that facility, the number of students that are there. That's checked three different times per year, or the actual cost to operate the facility, whichever's smaller. And you can see the amounts that have been spent over prior years. You can see that the appropriation is a little bit higher than what has been spent. Uh, we, particularly during 21, 22, 20, and 21, during COVID, the number of students declined. They, they couldn't have students in some of those environments with that taking place. So it is being funded according to law and the amount that's been appropriated should cover the costs in the next couple of years.
Ann.
Okay, did we determine this was the county facilities and not the state?
The one you asked about is not a juvenile detention facility. It, it's a, um, prison is the short term rather than a detention facility.
This one is Lawrence Gardner?
Yes. This is, this does not include Lawrence Gardner.
Oh, okay. So this is the county facilities?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was answering the wrong question for you. Sorry.
That's okay. Madam Chair, then I'd like to move we approve the amount proposed for juvenile detention facilities.
Dina? All in favor? Jim? He may have a text. Is that a thumbs up, Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Never had to work so hard to cast a vote. All right, special education. Uh, you see a lot of numbers on one slide there. So state aid amounts, uh, the first column of the numbers. The federal aid column is there because different times of the years, additional federal funding has been made available. Uh, the last three years that it was available, you see, uh, that's as a result of the state board's action, redirecting some of the ESRA funds that you had authority over, uh, to school districts. And in the excess cost percentage is the issue that's in statute, that the state will provide 92% of the excess cost for special education. And you see what's been happening, uh, to that percentage over the years. Uh, how it has declined primarily because costs increase each year and the increase in revenue has not kept up with that increase in, one, inflation and, two, the need to provide additional services. And those services, uh, by both state and federal statute, whoa, what did I do? Have, have to be, um, provided. Let me see if I can. Somehow I jumped clear to the end. I'm getting close. You probably wish too. Okay. So the services have to be required or provided as those needs increase. Uh, funding increases or the, the expenditures increase. Funding isn't, has increased, but hasn't increased as fast as the need for the services. Um, the primary issue for school districts, so we fund special ed transportation, catastrophic aid for really, uh, expensive, high-needs students, and Medicaid replacement. And then the rest goes as categorical aid, which is a reimbursement for teachers' salaries. And you, we arrive at that number with, literally with whatever money's left after those first three are funded, divided by the number of teachers and paras. So you see what has happened with that amount over the years. That changes, uh, based on the appropriation as well as how many teachers and paras do we have? And what were the other costs that had to be paid? So go back to this original chart. If, if state law requires the state to fund 92% of excess costs, you see that we are not meeting state law in this particular case. So the question becomes, uh, if we're going to meet state law, what are some ways to get there? Or what are some recommendations the, the board may, uh, or may not be interested in making? So we've got several options to show you and I'll just walk through each of them. And then we've got a table at the end that will kind of be a composite. Uh, one option obviously would be to just maintain what's been appropriated by the legislature so far. And you see what those dollar amounts are and what we estimate that would make the percentage of excess cost. Option two, uh, would be to pick a percentage for 2025. If our estimate is 69%, what would a more appropriate percentage be? 75%? The first one you see listed other than the 69 is what we are at this year. And you see the cost that would be necessary to reach each of those percentages. So if you go clear to the bottom of the list, if you wanted to go straight to 92% in one year, uh, it would require, uh, $762 million total state aid. The additional cost that would be requested from the legislature is that last column, 226 million. And I, I should point out here, or I'll forget to mention it. Federal aid is a function in calculating that 92% as well. So if federal aid increases, that lowers the amount the state needs to contribute. If federal aid decreases, um, which is the case now that the ESRA money's gone, then that increases the amount that the state needs to provide. So that, this would be another option. Pick a percentage that seems like an appropriate amount for this coming, for FY '25. And how many dollars are necessary to get to that percentage? And if you walk it all the way through, you see what it takes to get there in one year. Another option that's been looked at in prior years is phase this in over a number of years to get up to five years, or I'm sorry, to get up to 92%. Uh, this is the five-year option. Uh, need to add about $78.1 million each year. And that allows, uh, that assumes a 5% annual growth in excess costs. Each of these next few options are going to assume a 5% annual growth. You can see that you, uh, the money that you would need to add and where we would end up in 2029 at $926 million. Uh, we were asked to look at shorter years, four years, three years and so forth. So if you wanted to phase it in over four years, uh, now it's going to take, uh, you're going to get there faster. So it's going to take about 86 million, 86.6 million per year. And on each of these number of years requirements, five years, four years, three years, you'll see a dollar amount that it takes each year to get there. That dollar amount would be recalculated every year. In fact, it'll be recalculated this fall. Uh, and it's likely to be a little bit less than what you're seeing there. Uh, but if we would recalculate this one, for instance, this fall and determine that we only need 83 million each year, uh, that would be the recommendation that would go then to the governor, uh, for her consideration. If it were implemented, so we're going to add $83 million each year. Each year after that, we'd recalculate again. We wouldn't just keep putting in 83 million if that's not what it takes to get to 92%. Uh, so this is just an estimate for this point in time. Three-year phase in, now we're going to get there a little quicker. So we need 101 and a half million each year for three years. And you see how the percentages would grow. A two-year phase in. Now it's 132 million. And to help track it a little bit better, one table with each of those phase-in options, uh, to look at. And so what you're seeing there, um, the first column of numbers, what would the total state aid be? I'm sorry, what would the state aid increase be in FY '25 if you chose that option? So I'll pick the number out of the middle. If you wanted to phase it in over three years, uh, you would be asking for $637 million of state aid total in FY '25. And by the end of the three years, we would be up to 840 million in the middle column. Annually, we would be asking for a 101.5 million dollar increase. So those are all just a repeat of what you saw on the earlier charts, but kind of trying to combine them so we don't have to keep jumping back and forth between screens if you want to see any of those. All of them, by the time we get to the, the end of the, of what's shown as a five-year phase in, which I think would be 2029, every one of those options would have us with an ending state aid of $926 million. It's just a difference of how fast we want to get there.
This may be a factor in your thinking or not, the entire school finance formula sunsets in 2027. So in 2027, there'll be a new process convened and the whole thing will be looked at once again. So I don't know if that will play into your decision or not, but wanted you to remind you of that.
Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Craig, when you look at a formula...
Craig, when you look at a formula in special needs, I, you know, I hear from superintendents, and I know this is factual, that you may have a child that costs $100,000. They have physical. If some, if there is disabilities and stuff that have, that are being medically treated, whatever, in-house, one-on-one, you know, nursing care, something like that. Is, and they're on SSI or some kind of disability, which is actually, you know, federal or state aid already, is that factored in, into your formulas? I mean, for, at the local level?
That may be a part of the student's IEP. It may not, depends on the needs and how they can be addressed in school. But if they are a part of the student's IEP, then yes, those services are required and the, the school is responsible for providing them. And that's, a situation like you're describing might be a catastrophic aid, which is additional funding for those that are significantly high, higher needs. If you have to have three medical person, personnel with a student all day, every day, that's going to run into some money.
Is that something that's looked at in an audit? I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, every district and every, interlocal and every co-op are audited every year for their special education costs. And they have, they, more than you wanted to know, but they do have to verify that personnel, they said were special ed teachers, special ed paras, did spend 100% of their time on special education. If they only spent 80%, then we're going to reimburse them 80% of the cost, not 100%.
Part of my conversation here is if, if there is projected needs, I mean, we don't know all those factors ahead of time. And are we, are we adding money just assuming those things are going to happen? Or, I mean, when you're looking at, you know, a budget, three, four years, five years ahead of time, I, I'm just a little confused as to how this is all figured into. I, I know that the 92% is sort of your marker, but is, in, inflation, I mean, there's so many factors involved that it, it seems, well, I'm, I'm just struggling a little bit with, you know, this whole formula, how this works out.
I think I understand the question. So for special education, the legislature appropriates a set amount of money for the year, and that's it. Regardless of the needs that come in or additional staff, it has to be hand hired or whatever the situation may warrant. The amount appropriated is, is a dollar amount. So that on this table, we know that in '23, '24, the current year, there's going to be $528 million available. And then what happens as the year goes on, you do discover some of those needs change. Some are different. Some became less expensive, some more so, you had to hire, hire staff. And that's why this number, the amount you can pay per teacher, is adjusted at the end of the year. Because if, as you head to hire teachers, now we're dividing 528 million, or what's left of the 528 million, by maybe seven more teachers than we thought we would be, so it lowers this amount. So for future years then, estimates are made based on how rapidly needs are growing, what's inflation doing to the cost of providing transportation, all those kinds of issues. So all those are taken into account when the legislature then makes appropriations for future years.
Dennis. Here's what you're going to hear from superintendents. So the, whatever you decide here, or whatever the legislature decides, that's a set amount of money, as Craig's articulated. If your cost as a superintendent, because of the needs of the students go up, there's a, both state and federal mandate that you must meet those needs. That comes out of their general fund to then be transferred over to special ed to cover the excess cost. Does that help? And that's what you'll hear from them, is I'm taking out of my general fund because the state didn't fully fund special ed. So when you hear that, that's what they're doing. Because the dollar amount, the state's not, not varying it based upon the needs. It's a set amount, whatever the state ends up funding that formula. Hope that makes sense. It, it gets a little complicated, but that's what the superintendents are, are saying to you, is if I have high needs, I'm having to transfer more money out of my general fund into special ed, and so therefore I have a shortage here. I just wanted to clarify that.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Anne locked me out again. So didn't the federal government mess with us by the ESER fund? All this money's going in for one year, and now, I mean, we're
No, we did that.
gagging because now we only, we don't have it anymore because they took it away from us.
No.
I mean?
No, we did that.
That, doesn't that throw everything out of whack?
The federal government did make additional money available for special education this past year. This board made additional money available to school districts for three years. And the issue, throwing it out of whack, made more money available. As a school district, I knew it was going to end. I knew with the state board's money, for instance, I've known for three years it's going to end for special education, so I could plan accordingly.
Danny, maybe I could add to that. At the time, the state board said, look, it was not being funded. Let's use some of our ESER money. This particularly was helping out, it helped out every school district, but it particularly helped out those districts that, that maybe weren't being helped as much with ESER funds, which was a poverty-based formula. And so you see that, that was there for three years with the hope, and that was what the board voted on, is that the legislature then would pick that up over those three years on a five-year phase in, and therefore there wouldn't be that drop-off. What happened, or what is currently happening, the legislature kept that money flat, and so that money's not coming off. So it didn't work out as the board at that time, Danny, intended it for it to work. When I say that, because it still could be corrected. But at least right now, it hasn't worked as the state board had wanted it to work at that time.
Can I ask another question? So, so it seems to me that we do more testing on kids to try to find, and this is, I'm playing devil's advocate maybe, to find something wrong with them, so we're labeling the kid, which gives us more federal funding. So then we're getting more special ed money, we're wanting more special ed money total.
That's like winning the loser's.
I'm not trying to be mean, I just, I just, I mean, it just, I mean, we're, we're, we think we need more special ed money, but we're also testing kids and finding more things wrong with them.
When you lose money on every kid, why would you do that?
Say that again.
You, I find more schools fighting to keep kids out of special ed because they lose money on everyone. It, it doesn't help to put more kids in special.
I don't see that, but I, I appreciate your comment.
I guarantee you, I guarantee you, because we're, every special ed kid you get costs you more money out of your general fund because federal doesn't fund special ed. I mean, they said they'd fund, what, 40% and they only fund 20%? So that doesn't even make sense. That, that does not pass the numbers test at all. That would be no, no incentive for a district to try to label more kids as special ed. They have every incentive to keep them out.
Financial incentive.
Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so, so two questions. I guess we want to make, we would want to make sure to tell our districts, we can't rely on that federal money. You know, because I see it at the top and then kind of in the middle for three years. You would want them to predict to not, that, that we're not going to be able to provide them with any federal. I mean, let's just assume they budget towards that. And then my, my second question is, if we pick summary, or we pick option one, two, or three, that doesn't guarantee it's going to happen. Legislation can do their own thing and the governor can do her. So we're not guaranteed anything with any of them, correct? I mean, they're their own branch and own arm of government, they can do their own thing, correct? And they, they fund, so.
You, you could pick, stick with what was appropriated, and the governor and legislature could say, no, we want to do more than that.
Okay. So really, we're just, our vote doesn't mean that, that this is the way it's going to be, just so, it's just a recommendation.
Yeah, don't want to burst any balloons, but yeah, that's.
Okay, well, I just want to, those are my questions, is we don't have a solid, yes, this is going to happen because we had so many X amount of votes, it doesn't mean that they're going to carry that through and, and do what we ask.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
These are our recommendations to the governor. And as we talked about, recall at this board last year, these are aspirational. And the conversations we have here may be, are admissible in court. If, you know, for instance, this should go to court, then they're going to listen to what we had to say today. Anne.
Yeah, Michelle's right. I think I, I was happy to see last year the governor did take our recommendation and put it in her budget. And that, that's our hope, that they pay attention to us as, as the experts. And actually, the, these three federal aid amounts aren't anything the federal government did. We did that. We had discretionary money as a state board from ESER. And we said, not to mess it up, but to give them relief, we would take some of our discretionary money and give it to the districts, hoping that at the end, the state would step up and actually follow the law. And I think that's a good theme for us to keep, is make them follow the law. And the law that they wrote and passed says they will fund 92% of the excess costs. And I want to go back and just throw one other number out. When GANNON was ended, the state agreed over a period of time to add 500 million more to general state aid for the districts. Now, according to the WestEd study, 500 million only allowed the districts to tread water, not meet any of our goals of 95% graduation or 75% of kids in Level III or IV, only to tread water. And it took them several years to get there. So all those years, we were falling behind because of inflation. And then after they got to the 500 million, which they did, now we see the CPI kicking in. And so that will determine how much more we get every year after that. So think of that number, 500 million. The shortfall, I think that Craig shared with us last month, because they're not funding the special ed law, school districts had to take 170 million out of that 500 million to pay for special ed services. Because they are proposing to continue not to fund the law, in the school year, the fiscal year we're talking about, they will be 226 million short that they have to take out of their general fund to pay for these services. So nearly half of the new money we got to do better, to help kids be successful, is going to have to go to pay for special ed. At some point this keeps going, it's all gone, you know, and, and they're just funding more. So I think it's important that the message we deliver to the governor and the legislature is fund the law. And last year, we all, our proposal was, okay, get to 92% over five years. Now Randy, I don't know if we have heard at all, do we know if the governor plans to use more Spark money to pump in? The five-year plan we had last year that we proposed would have added 72 million a year over five years, and then they'd be up to 92%. And there was some hope that she might use Spark money this year to, to do that, but.
I don't believe there's, I don't believe there's any movement right now, either the legislature or the governors, to, to fund anything in the current or in arrears out of federal money.
Okay, so if we, if we did the same recommendation, okay, give you another five years. According to the, the chart on page 16, they'd have to kick in 78 million a year. I personally think that's too long to wait. They got a lot of extra money right now. They could be using that to solve this problem and give our school districts back the money that GANNON was supposed to give them. But I think Jim probably has an idea about that, so I'll stop talking.
Jim.
Whenever, whenever schools, as, as we already talked about, schools are required to meet the needs of special needs students. So they are going to be funded no matter what happens. And so the money has to come from someplace else. And so even though special education is underfunded, the students are not, the, the special ed students are not being cheated, but it very well could be to the detriment of everybody else. And on Michelle's comment about this being aspirational, yes, if you recall, we've made recommendations every year, and they haven't done them yet. So, so, you know, last year, we did vote five. And by the way, I opposed it last year because we had money and I wanted to do more than that. But I don't, I think it's critical that we make a strong statement. First of all, I'm concerned that the special committee is going to come back and say, now, we're going to change the 92%. And consequently, it's fun, making an attempt to fund special education less responsibly. I'm a political realist. I would, I would prefer to say, let's do it in one year. That's what I personally would prefer, but I know that in all likelihood, that would not be supported. And so, but I also think that we gave the legislature the opportunity to do a five-year phase in last year that they ignored. And that the legislature may not pay attention to us, but the courts do. And I think, and some of you may correct me if this is wrong with again, and did not address special education because at that time, we were at 92%. So that wasn't an issue, is that correct statement?
I don't know that we were at 92, but we're much closer than we are now.
Okay. So I'm going to propose that, and quite, I would say, I would prefer to say one year. But I think that, that, that we need to be reasonable. I think that, and so I am going to recommend and move for the purpose of discussion and see what happens, that we adopt the five, the four-year plan.
It's a second from Betty. Anne was too slow. Further discussion.
Craig, if you could review with the board, if they pass that recommendation of 86.6 million, how much money does the state of Kansas currently have? Does that put a strain on the budget if they make that recommendation?
The ending cash balance, I can't believe I forgot. Okay, the ending cash balance is about $1.9 billion. That does not include a budget stabilization fund that has in excess of $1.5 billion available. I believe that's correct, yes.
Danny.
Thank you. I guess I'll relate it to business again. Thank God we have money in the bank. But also, we know that revenue goes down. And so if business is responsible for all the families that they have in their business. So you want to build as many, as much cash reserve as you can so that during bad times, you're able to still stay in business and fund your families.
Anne.
Danny's absolutely right. And by state law, that reserve fund is supposed to be 7% of, of the budget. And there were a number of years, we weren't even close, in fact, we were like, we had to fudge because we were zero. But this number that they have right now, they have a billion and a half in the rainy day fund. Many, what percent is that? It's many more times what they need in the rainy day fund. So we are not in any danger of breaking the bank by any recommendation we'd make today.
And I appreciate your comments, but I disagree, having been in business 40 years, that you, cash is king, and I don't know that anybody will disagree with that. And I'm not so sure you can't have too much cash.
Further discussion? Yeah, yeah, we did. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would just, Dr. Randy, did you say that we're going to come around and do this again in '27? Is that right?
The entire school finance formula sunsets in 2027.
Okay.
So the legislature would then have to have a new school finance formula. Either adopt the old one and carry it over, or they're going to have to have a new pro, a new. Either adopt the old one and carry it over, or they're going to have to have a new program.
Do we have a second on Jim's motion?
We do. Betty seconded. She beat Ann to it, remember? Any further discussion? I just want to point out that, right now, they're not funding the law. And to everything that Ann said, and Danny, I've got to back up her comments about how it does hurt school districts to identify more kids. I have two kids in special ed. It's been, it's been an interesting seven years for us now. I really support backing these districts, not just for the purposes of making sure that those special ed kids get what they need, because they're, we're paying the parents first. Their needs are getting met. But it does hit the general ed budget. And if you go and talk to your individual districts, they'll tell you how hard it's hitting them. And it's proportionate to, you know, how many kids are identified in special ed right now, that's coming out of the general ed fund. So I know that I'm repeating what's already been said, but I feel very strongly that this is important.
And understand, a lot of times, I'm going to, I'm going to play devil's advocate, because I want to, I mean, it's like, sometimes, it's like, we won't even talk about certain things. And special ed is one of the things, and I think we need to talk about it. And I'm, all for special ed, please don't misunderstand me. But I'm one of those ones that's not afraid to, let's, let's maybe take the devil's advocate point of view. I'm not against it at all.
Noted, noted. And I just wanted on record that I support this, and that is how I plan to vote. We certainly have the budget as a state right now to cover this, and it's time that we caught up. Those are my comments.
How much is the additional amount, though? So, I assume you found?
Yes. Oh, how much balance? Actually, I was low. It's more like $2.5 billion balance. And the projection is that, by the end of next year, it will be higher. It's actually going, projected to grow.
Every, it seems like every month, we add additional money to the, to the pot, so to speak. But like Danny's, like Danny says, I've also been in the legislature when the bottom fell out, and we had to cut schools, the funding to schools. So, it's very pain, can be very painful experiences.
I don't see any more names in the app. Are we ready to vote? All right. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Jim, I see yes.
That is a unanimous 10-0 vote. General, Jim already submitted his yes.
I recommend a break, Madam Chair.
I recognize your request for a break. We will take, let's come back at 12:25. Welcome back.
All right. Next item is funded, according to statute, the board has discussed, I think, every year, the fact that transportation funding is provided only for those students who live two and a half miles or more from their assigned attendance center. And so that distance is an issue. The other issue, and maybe the bigger issue, is if you live less than two and a half miles, some of the safety issues you might have. If there are no sidewalks, if you're crossing a railroad, if you're living on a highway, those types of things. School districts can provide that transportation, but they're not funded. The law is being funded as written currently, and has been for quite some time.
Craig, because it came up a little bit this morning, can you speak to, what about if a school district that goes and transports students from another school district, which will be true of open, when open enrollment kicks into?
So school districts can provide transportation to students in a neighboring district, if those students are coming to school there. There is no state aid provided for non-resident students, regardless of the distance you're transporting them. So some districts will do that, some will have the students meet them at the district border, some don't provide transportation for non-residents. In any event, there's no state aid provided. Only those districts who are, or I'm sorry, only those students who are residents of your district.
The districts do pay the parents, though, mileage, don't they, in certain situations? I mean, they can choose to do that?
Providing transportation sometimes means, we don't run buses, we pay the parents mileage.
Okay.
Ann?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know while there's, we've had off and on discussion about trying to get the legislature to move that way, particularly in urban areas, since we don't have any data to base that on, I think we have to go with what the law says. And I'd like to move that we have, fund the, make a recommendation on transportation to fund the current law at two and a half miles.
Second from Betty. Any further discussion? I see none. All in favor, raise your hand. That's nine in the room. Do we still have Jim?
He's in the airport. Let's see what he says. Yes.
10-0.
Transportation for career and technical education. These are the students that attend a program at a vocational college, or a community college for career and tech ed courses, and transportation, I'm sorry, thanks. And state aid is provided to help offset the cost, if the school district provides transportation to that program and back. This is one area to make sure you're aware. This is not actually in statute that it must be done, but it has been funded ever since Senate Bill 155 of quite a few years ago. And the, up until this year, the amount you see there, 1,482,338, was enough to fund the costs, as it's been established. This year, it was a little short. So you see on the budget options, to fully fund the program in fiscal year '25 would probably require an additional $517,000.
Discussion? Dennis?
Again, do students, if they're driving already as a senior, driving to a tech school or something, get reimbursed?
No. Only, only the district is reimbursed if the district provides the transportation.
So that's reflected? So, that's reflected in this, in the way this is, I mean, this is not law?
Correct.
Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Craig, for concurrent enrollment or classes like, things like CAPS and stuff, that's not refunded?
Excuse me. No, only the career technical education courses. So, if the student is going to take Algebra II, even if the district takes them there, there's not, Algebra II, poor choice, college algebra.
I'm talking about CAPS. I'm talking about like a program.
CAPS is technical education, yes.
Okay. So, the district can decide to do it or not do it?
Correct.
It's up to the district?
Yes. Even with the funding provided, it's not required.
And they only get reimbursed?
Yes. They tell us at the end of the year how many miles they drove, and we reimburse on that basis. And then it's audited.
Is there, is there any kind of a breakdown of which districts are using this?
There would be. I don't have that with me, but we can get it for you.
I'd be curious. Thank you.
It has grown over the years, which is why it's a little short of full funding this year.
Thank you.
Anne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a good point Michelle made. I mean, there are a lot of kids that wouldn't get to go to CAPS or a lot of places if the district didn't get them over there because they don't have cars and, you know, that kind of thing. And so, even though it's not required by law, I think it's really critical that we help kids who don't have transportation to get these additional enhancements. So, I'd like to move that we recommend that we fully fund the program at a cost of $517,662.
Second from Dina.
There are two options. One is just to...
Further discussion? I just want to add that one of the benefits of this program has been that it also really impacts rural students. I mean, this is really where this comes into play, is in rural districts needing to have access to those CTE centers that maybe aren't right down the street.
Yeah. I mean, if they need to get to the tech school to get their welding class or...
Well, what I'm hearing, I'm sorry, what I'm hearing is, and we even got it from the one young man, I can't think of his name. I mean, they are driving, in talking to the students we had here, they are driving themselves 30 miles because they don't have that. So, like, this isn't doing the job per se. And so, every district is choosing one way or the other what they're doing.
Well, if the state won't fund it, then they don't do it. I mean, they can't afford to do it in many cases. If the state would fully fund it, then they could get those kids transportation. That's the reason for my motion, so more kids could go.
So, personal experience, my son took two part-time jobs, pays his own gas, and gets himself to that thing because it's meaningful to him and it matters to him. They're not funding it, they're not funding it. He's paying for it out of his own pocket. So, that's the, that is the perseverance, that's him wanting to do it, that's him taking, getting two part-time jobs, paying for his own gas, having his own car. He's paying, he's being responsible and accountable, and it's not happening until his senior year. So, what I'm saying is, these are things that are happening later as almost an adult, and he's deciding to do these things. He could be doing a part-time job instead. He could be leaving school early and doing a part-time job. He still has the part-time jobs after the school and after the running and everything else. So, I'm just saying, we can't always be, do everything for everybody. We just can't. We can't do it, we can't do it all. You have to, you have to pick and choose, just like you do in your home budget. You have to figure out what's important and what matters. And you can say, yeah, well, we've got to do it for the kids that can't. He's making it happen on his own by having two part-time jobs to help pay for that.
Well, you know, privilege is when it's not a problem because it's not a problem for you.
That's not privileged. That is...
It is privileged. I mean, we have a lot of kids out there working a part-time job to feed the family, you know, and on their wish list is the opportunity to go to school.
People have sacrifices, Anne. There's, everybody has their own sacrifice. There's some people that have, make sure their kids eat and have clothes on their back, and they have lawn furniture in their front yard and their living room. I mean, there's, I've talked to many, and they're very successful because they make sacrifices that matter at that time. And so, we can't just assume everybody needs something because they're, label them poor or whatever it is, and they have to have this or that. We're assuming things that may or may not be true. And you're making an assumption about something that you don't know, you don't know the whole story or anything about it. So, I just, I hate to have to come on public record, but just say, you can't always have everything. We can't have everything. We can't have everything that we want. And some people have to make sacrifices and decide what's important.
Betty.
Okay. I really, once again, have to point out something. Because when you talk about your son having two part-time jobs, which is admirable, and buying his own gas, which is great, but you have to realize there are some kids that don't have a car. So, even though the part-time job would pay for the gas, if they don't have a car to put it in, what are we talking about? And when you talk, when you say that we can't do everything, I agree with you, we can't. But there are some things. If we can give those kids who don't have that option an opportunity, we should do that. I, and let me finish because I'm not trying to disagree with you. I understand. There will be some that can. There will be others that can't. And as a state board, we always talk about each student. You know, I would love it if we say every kid has the same opportunity, starts at the same point. That would make our job so easy. But that's not the case, that's not the reality. And if we can do something that will ensure the success of every student, I just ask, again, not from an argumentative standpoint, but just from your consideration, I just ask that you consider how we can meet or try to meet the needs of all students and understand that there are some that, not because they choose to be, not because they're unwilling to work. There are some that just don't have all of the resources available. So, it's, you have the right to vote as you see fit. I'm just asking you factor that in as a consideration.
And thank you for that, Betty. I think sometimes getting, you know, getting to a school, getting on a bus, going to Tassel in the summertime. I mean, well, I'm not going to get into life. I'm just not.
Madam Chair, sorry.
Danny.
I'm sorry. Something's still locked.
Part of my concern would be, because I don't like, if we're talking about we're supposed to be for all kids mindset for the future, be able to do things for themselves. So, are we putting a mindset that I don't have to worry about it because somebody's going to, down the road, take care of me?
It's the same principle, it's the same principle as providing transportation for those students that, and we set the standard, two and a half miles, we're going to provide you with transportation. We understand the reality, even in rural districts, of how far they have to travel. We don't impose that burden on them because of those factors. I'm saying that same thought process should exist when we evaluate this. Now, how you vote, that's up to you. But I do wish you would consider that there are times going against the grain. There are times when we have to look outside our own front door and recognize that there are a lot of students in the state of Kansas, for whatever reason, require additional support, require additional help. If you vote against it, you vote against it. But I just want you to consider that.
Craig, for clarity, can I just ask real quick? In the past, I always had the impression that this was a program where students were being bused from their home school, the high school, to the CTE program per, as, when I use the right words here, CTE programs as we see in SB 155, right? Is that the typical mode, is they're transporting from the high school to the CTE center?
Yes. It's a round trip from the high school to the vocational program and back.
Okay. So, it's not like they're picking them up at their houses and taking them to the program?
Not for this transportation.
Okay. Thank you. Any, all right. Let's vote. All in favor, raise your hand.
Jim voted yes.
And we've got a yes from Jim, so that's six. Opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay. Motion passes.
The mentor teacher program helps fund, provide funding for a mentor to work with each new teacher in a school district. It's intended in statute to provide that $1,000 for the mentor each year for the first three years that the new teacher is in the district. The funding has never covered that entire cost. Typically, we can pay $1,000 for the first year and a proportional share of that for the second year, and sometimes nothing for those that are working with third-year teachers. That was the situation this year. I believe it was $457 for a second-year mentor rather than $1,000, and we had nothing left to pay for the third-year mentor. So, our estimate would be to fully fund the program would require an additional $1 million in FY '25.
Kathy.
Can this money be used for the apprenticeship program?
This is set forth in statute specifically for the mentor teacher program. So, it has to be an identified mentor in the district that meets specific requirements as far as how long they have been in the district and training that they received. And then they work directly with a new first-year teacher, not with an aspiring teacher.
Okay. So, okay. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Motion would be in order. Betty?
I move that the State Board of Education fully fund the mentor teacher program for fiscal year budget 2025.
Second, Dina. All in favor? That's nine. And Jim?
Tim voted yes.
Is 10. So, 10-0, motion passes.
State aid for professional development. By statute, this is paid as a percentage of the amount they actually spend as a district for professional development, or a small percentage of the general fund, whichever is smaller. The appropriation doesn't cover the cost that districts are spending. This only applies to specifically professional development expenditures that do not include any federal funds like SIR, title funds, those types of issues. The state's not providing additional funding on top of the federal money they might receive. This is just money that is being used from their general fund or their LOB to cover the professional development costs, providing training for teachers. And the teachers have to have an approved professional development plan. Our estimate is to fully fund that would require an additional $1.9 million.
Questions? Dina?
Well, the fact that we do still have some individuals who need to continue to have the, the things that we have requested of them, have those available to them, it seems appropriate to recommend that the professional development be fully funded in fiscal year 2025.
So, moved. Is there a second? Kathy? Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry. And Jim?
Yes.
Jim is a yes. That's a 10-0. Motion passes. Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment real quick. The, my personal opinion is if it's legislated, it should be funded. So, that's, when it comes to that, like, they are going to put it out there and say that's what they're going to do, then they should pay for it.
And could I comment that maybe all of that could be spent on science or reading? Science or reading?
I second that.
Madam Chair, Jim informed me he's not going to be available to vote probably from this point on, so we'll check.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
All right. The National Board Certification is a program that, fairly rigorous program that allows, provides training for teachers to meet national standards, and they literally become nationally certified. Once they are, that certification holds for 10 years. In statute, they are to be paid an additional $1,000 by their local district. Whether the state funds it or not, the local district pays those teachers an additional $1,000. You see the history of the state funding, what has been appropriated, we estimate will be enough to cover those costs. So, it is being funded according to law.
Betty.
I move that the State Board of Education fund the National Board Certification at its current level.
Is there a second? Michelle, is a que, hang on, let's see if we can get a second, then I'll go to you. Anne? So, second from Anne. Now, we have a motion, so go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Craig, do we know if the, the amount seems to be growing? Do we know that the teachers in Kansas, what, are those growing every year? Are those being retained? Are those decreasing in numbers? Do we have a count on that to know if those funds are going towards more teachers being nationally recognized or...
I'll get the actual numbers for you. I believe it's actually declined just a little bit.
This is an area, Michelle, that baffles me a little bit because we are way low compared to the national. And it's a very rigorous process. But we would encourage our best teachers to go through that process because it makes you a better teacher. It's, and it's, I believe it's a 10-year certification. So, once you get it, you renew it every 10 years. But we just don't have very many teachers that embark upon that. And I'm not sure what the reason. We've tried to promote it. We tried to speak about it. We just, we don't compared to other states for whatever reason.
Dennis.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. The mobile compact that is probably going to come around, is this going to help that situation in any way or be a deterrent?
I don't think it would be a deterrent. This doesn't impact state licensure necessarily. So, I would, I would say probably not. Shane Carter may have a slightly different answer for you.
And the mentor program that we just voted on, would this make more teachers, mentors available, you think? Would it be a...
Possibly. To be honest, my experience in a district, teachers serving as mentors feel like they get as much out of the program as the new teacher did. And I'm not sure they would decide to do it or not do it over $1,000.
Danny?
So, what does, what does National Board Certification do for a teacher?
Improves their craft, I guess is a short way of saying it. Makes them a better teacher. They're exposed to a great deal of training. They have to provide artifacts demonstrating that they can implement the training that they've used.
Artifacts? What's artifacts?
Evidence. Evidence that I've implemented this, whether it's video or somebody else observing me, materials that I've developed, those types of things.
Commissioner, could you elaborate on, you said it's very rigorous.
It is. And thus, that's why the legislature said we're going to reimburse those teachers for every year that they hold that certification because it, the program that's put out, voluntary program, it's not a state certification, it's a nationally recognized certification, very rigorous, peer-reviewed, and has to have evidence that it makes a difference for students in the classroom. Those teachers that have participated say, by far, this has made me a very, a much better teacher. And that's why the $1,000. I don't know why, we just haven't seen it grow to the level. We would love to see it grow with our veteran teachers. grow with our veteran teachers.
Okay, Kathy?
So when we say $1,000, is that every year they're employed? Okay, so it's a, it's a salary?
Every year they hold the National Board Certification and they are teaching.
recommend that we meet the federal maintenance of the requirements.
Okay.
So it's a combination of both, Kathy.
Second, Betty?
And so that word "national" which plays weird in my head, it doesn't mean they're
Further discussion? All in favor?
licensed?
No.
9-0, motion passes.
Okay.
No, it just means they were recognized by a certification that's a national certification,
Parents as teachers provides services for families of young children, newborn.
similar to maybe advanced placement for a student. They set, so you take a course locally and then you set for an exam that every student in the nation's taking.
You'll note in '23-'24, there's an increase in the approved amount.
It's very similar.
Okay.
Any additional questions, discussion, ready to vote?
It's actually a $1 million increase.
All in favor?
It doesn't show, it shows like 900,000 because there was a reappropriation in '22-'23.
That's 9-0 because we don't have Jim anymore. Motion passes.
That was recommended last year by this board and the governor and implemented by the legislature. School lunch program, if you want to surprise people, ask them what the largest federally-funded So that will allow them to meet increasing costs. program is for school districts. I don't know that we'll be able to serve very many more families, but we'll meet increasing It's school lunch. And the state's obligation is to meet a minimal maintenance of effort requirement, which costs. The, there was no recommendation made to increase that again from the Children's Cabinet. amounts to 4.6 cents per student, and that is the amount that the state provides and So what they, what the legislature appropriated met the recommendation that was made last has for quite some time. And we, the amount they've appropriated will continue to meet that requirement. year at this time.
Discussion, questions? Dina?
I move that in relationship to school lunch, that in fiscal year 2025, that we recommend that we meet the federal maintenance of the requirements.
Second, Betty? Further discussion? All in favor? 9-0, motion passes.
Parents as teachers provides services for families of young children, newborn. You'll note in '23-'24, there's an increase in the approved amount. It's actually a $1 million increase. It doesn't show, it shows like 900,000 because there was a reappropriation in '22-'23. That was recommended last year by this board and the governor and implemented by the legislature. So that will allow them to meet increasing costs. I don't know that we'll be able to serve very many more families, but we'll meet increasing costs. The, there was no recommendation made to increase that again from the Children's Cabinet. So what they, what the legislature appropriated met the recommendation that was made last year at this time.
Discussion, questions? Motion would be in order. Ann?
I move we fund parents as teachers at the current level for fiscal year 2025.
That's our second. Dina? All in favor? Opposed? That is 8-1, motion passes.
Pre-K pilot program provides funding for three- and four-year-old students. The, the good news is the program's been growing, which means the money doesn't go quite as far as it used to, but it, it has been a very beneficial program and good to see a lot of other districts using it. You can see the history of the funding. Children's Initiative Fund and TANF funds have been used over the years. And to give us the total, the Children's Cabinet did not make a recommendation as far as increasing funding.
Questions, discussion? Dennis?
Can you just clarify the two different funds? What, I mean, we've got two different?
Children's Initiative Fund comes from the tobacco settlement from years ago, the federal tobacco settlement where the tobacco companies had to provide funding to each state. In Kansas, they've chosen to use at least part of that to provide children's funding for education. And then TANF is federally-funded programming for students in need. So that portion of the funding has to be used for students who are at risk. So that's why you see the statement that at least 50% of the students must be at risk in the program.
Thank you.
Ann?
And if, if I'm correct, private providers can qualify for this as well, too. Churches can do it, anybody, it's not just public schools doing this, so a lot of communities benefit from this money.
You are correct, that's a good point.
Is it childcare then? I mean, can be just not necessarily connected with the USD, but probably, is that what you're saying, Ann?
Yeah, I think it's actually, I think the pre-K pilot actually has some requirements that they provide some kind of educational effort in there as well. So it's not just childcare, but it's early childhood education, if you will, because they have some requirements to have to show that they're getting some results. But it can be a private provider, it could be your local church.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you.
Commissioner, I have in my notes that maybe Melissa was going to be back from the Kansas Children's Cabinet to present in front of the board in the next couple of months, is that, so we might discuss that at that time? Excellent. Does anyone have a hand? Sure, Betty?
I move that the State Board of Education fund the K, pre-K pilot at its current level for 2025 budget.
Is there a second? Dina? Any further discussion? All in favor? Seven. Opposed? I've got, that makes eight. Danny, were you for or against? That's a no vote. Got 7-1-1. Okay, motion passes.
The juvenile transitional crisis pilot program funds a program in Beloit. And you can see there that the purposes of the program, to meet social and emotional needs of at-risk students, they do that in part through the special education cooperative that they have there, as well as other resources. And it has been funded by the legislature at $300,000 each year except 2021. And this was a legislative initiative originally and remains that way.
Kathy?
So this is, I'm just trying to make sure I'm catching all of this. So it is helping juveniles obtain their high school diploma?
Yes.
So is it like a onsite?
And I'm, I'm probably shortchanging it in a brief description, but very much the intent is for students who are at risk, struggling in high school, not going to be successful, to provide them with a successful future.
It's a very specific program, Kathy, to Beloit, and it serves the surrounding area around Beloit, but these are students that have fairly severe emotional disturbances that prohibit them from being effective in the regular classroom. And so they're working with therapists during the day, and of course, academic, too. And then they hope to reintegrate those students back in their home. Sometimes that takes years, sometimes it doesn't happen at all, but that's, that's their hope.
So they're not in their homes at this time?
They're, they're at their home.
Okay.
They're not at their home school necessarily.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Unless they go to Beloit schools.
Okay.
No, it's, it's not residential, they don't, they don't stay there.
Well, I just, yeah, okay.
Ann? Yeah, I think Kathy was right, we need to hold the legislature accountable for what it did, but this was not our idea, this was not our program. And I, I think if this is so good, and it probably is, they should do it statewide. But I think if we don't do anything either way, it's still going to happen. So I'd almost like the board to consider just not taking any action on this item.
Dennis?
I'm sorry, thank you. Well, my question, if it's a pilot program, are we going to get a report sometime as to how, what the success rate is?
Because it's a legislative program, the legislature gets a report every year.
Okay. Is there, okay.
Interesting thing, as Ann said, this was not a request from you, this is not a request from the agency, this was a request directly from the people in Beloit to the legislate, there are legislators, and that was approved. So it had, it has something to do with you because it's in education, but it never was a part of anything you recommended, Dennis, and that's why there's no reporting to it.
Ann, why don't you make a motion then, and I'll second it.
Maybe, I just don't need a motion, we just don't take any action.
All right, I'm good with that.
Just move on.
All right, Safe and Secure Schools. You're probably familiar with this program and with the grant that you approved yesterday. School, I want to make sure it's clear, school districts have to match those grants on a dollar-for-dollar basis, so the, the money essentially goes twice as far once they receive it. There you can see the dollar amounts over the years, two years it was not implemented. The first column is the amount that's been requested each of those years, the amount of the state aid, so $5 million this year. That means school districts are also matching another $5 million, and 188 districts requested funding this summer. So, and their funding they requested, you see, is 14.4 million essentially with a $5 million grant. It's, it's not in statute, this is a proviso that's added to the budget each year when they choose to do it. So the question would be for budget options, continue to fund at $5 million, or request additional funding be made available to meet more of the requests from school districts.
Ann?
Well, the truth is, they'd like to have 100 million to do what they need to do. I have one superintendent asked me if we'd file a bill that would allow districts to have a vote of the people to tax up to two mils, and so they could really do the infrastructure hardening, the communication needs that they have, that would really harden a school and protect kids. So again, this is one of those legislative things, they're not really doing it right. It's kind of a bone they threw out to make it look like they're trying to help schools, and, and I'm sure the schools are using the money well, I don't have a problem with that, but, I mean, it's kind of their thing, and I, if we don't take action, it's still going to happen.
Something to think about as what Ann said for you. I'm probably one of the few people that was living when we did lose someone in a school shooting in Kansas that's still in the profession. I was teaching in Andover when we lost principal and teacher in Goddard High School at the time, which is now their intermediate center. Regardless of the money, there's going to be a disaster in Kansas. Unfortunately, we just don't know when, right? It happens. I don't know if you want to go on record as to what you want to do around school funding because, again, we are woefully underfunding the safe and security, the physical security of schools. And Ann mentioned two, two areas. You know, the, kind of the pinch points, hardening of the physical facility and communication, where the ability when cell phones don't work, that you can communicate so that you know what's going on inside and outside. Those are expensive proposals. When you're building new, they usually incorporate that. When you have old facilities, making those, you know, safer are pretty costly. I don't know if that impacts your decision or not, I just want to point that out because if there were a school shooting, someone's going to ask the question, what do the state board do? That's just going to be a reality.
Well, then we should recommend 100 million and do it right. I just don't want to support doing it half.
I just want you to be aware of, you know, of that.
Dina?
Well, Ann's latest comment was kind of what I was thinking, but do we even know what kind of dollar amount would actually fund, fund it at a level that every school district could be as safe as possible?
The short answer is no. The longer answer is we have school districts each year that do not apply because they know $5 million just won't touch it for what they need to do. We have school districts that apply for much less than what they really need. Again, they know that $5 million doesn't go far enough. So you see, 14.3 million was requested this year. I don't think that represents the need by any means.
Danny?
So do we have big guidelines? I mean, I, I know some schools now even have their own police force. For some reason, that won't go into this thick head. Now that we have, we have a school district that's got a police force, do they have, do they read Miranda rights to kids that are, that are causing problems, or, I mean, is there guidelines of what, I mean, where they're buying cameras? They're buying $5 million worth of cameras. How does that make you more safe in school when, when, if you're Manhattan, you can get any doors because the kid's putting a little thing in the door and let their buddies in? I mean, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't spend the money, I'm just saying, what are the guidelines for safe and secure schools?
The, there are standards on the State Department website. They were adopted by the state board a number of years ago, and if you permit me, you're, you're kind of leading into another point. One of the state board's goals was to provide a safe and secure environment to attend school and specifically increase physical safety at all school districts. In order to help implement that, we believe we would need another person, at least one, on staff so that we would be able to physically do audits of school districts and their safety plans to address questions similar to that. What have they done? What do they have in place? What are the other issues that they need to, to look at and be able to address to make their school as safe as possible?
I'm just going to point out real quick that John Calvert last presented to this board, I think last October, and so he's with Safe and Secure Schools. Ann, go ahead.
Well, rather than support something that doesn't even get halfway there, I'd like to move that the State Board of Education recommend to the legislature that they assess their safety standards in law and adequately fund safe and secure schools.
Can you define adequately?
Well, they'll have to assess their own standards and see what that would cost, which they've never done. They set out the nine standards, which Randy said, you can find them on our website, and they're pretty specific, but they keep throwing out $5 million, but they have all these standards that $5 million won't touch. So that's my motion.
Do we have a second? Second from Dina. Further discussion? All in favor? 9-0, motion passes.
McKay, I can send that to you if you want.
All right. The other grant you, you saw and approved yesterday, Mental Health Intervention Team Pilot Program. Funding for that was increased by $3 million this year, provides a, allows districts to hire a liaison to coordinate those services. The school district does not provide the services, obviously, that's not what they're qualified to do, but they do coordinate and work with the students and their families and the mental health center. The, by adding that additional $3 million, you can see how the number of school districts that are participating grew from 66 to 90. You can also see the history of the funding increasing over the years. So the question would be whether to ask to continue to grow that program and allow more school districts to participate and provide services for students. and allow more school districts to participate and provide services for students.
Anne, is that a leftover or did you click the hand raise? No, okay. No, it's, it's my fault, I didn't clear it. Questions, discussion? Or a motion? Dina?
I move that we recommend that the Mental Health Intervention Team Pilot Program be expanded to 15 to 25 more school districts in fiscal year 2025.
That's second from Betty. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. I've got six opposed. One, two, three, six to three, motion passes.
Okay, now the one I jumped to just a minute ago. You have a goal to provide safe and secure environments to each school. And to implement that, as I said, we would need an additional staff person to help with auditing schools. And by auditing, I mean physically going to the school and walking through their crisis plan, what are the steps that are in place, what additional thoughts need to be considered. I will tell you, if, if you don't remember, the legislature had a bill that would advance this towards this earlier in the session, but it, it did not end up going through either house and being voted on. So it's also a thought that the legislature has had as far as being able to increase our ability, the State Department's ability, to provide this assistance to school districts. If that's the goal that you want to march towards, you can see there, we believe we'd need to add another staff person to make that work.
I'm going to support this, and the reason is there are numerous organizations that'll come out and do audits for school districts. And everyone wants to sell you a whole bunch of products. It would be very valuable to have an objective opinion, and it's very difficult to get those from people that have a vested interest in their commission. I move that we approve this request. The, the new position.
And a second from Betty? Any further discussion? All in favor? Dennis?
You think this would, Craig, do you think this would move the legislature to actually get serious about safety?
I, I believe the legislator that introduced the bill last year intends to do so again this year. So that their, the state board's assistance with that, I think, would be valuable.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor? Eight opposed. One. Eight to one, motion passes.
I believe the final item we have to bring before you, virtual assessments, and we've talked about this a number of times, state assessments can now be taken online, which brings some security issues front and center. We've mentioned before, Kansas is one of the lower states in the country in terms of funding for state assessments, funding that's provided to develop and implement those assessments. So as a result, we don't have parallel assessments, we don't have alternative assessments. If security is breached and items are made available to the public, we have to start all over with a new assessment. And that brings a cost with it, which you see estimated on, on this slide. We have made the chairs of the House Appropriations Committee and the Senate's committees aware of the fact that if there's a breach, where KU is going to have to develop a new assessment for us, and that comes with the cost that you see right here. So they're aware of the possibility of a request for supplemental funding. You can see there's an upfront cost in the first year down at the bottom, and we've got some acronyms. Kansas Assessment Program for CAP. Kansas English Language Performance Assessment, I believe, is what KELPA stands for. So those two combined in year one would be $9.3 million. Of that, $4 million is a one-time cost. But there would then be an ongoing cost of $5.2 million each year thereafter. And that's... We're probably a little late, to be honest, to start developing this. If you have to wait for a breach before the development takes place, you're already behind.
Would it be reasonable to say this is unintended consequence of, of the decision to let virtual students?
I believe that's correct. Logically, to most people, it makes sense. They do everything else online, why wouldn't you let them take the test online? But there are some possibilities out there.
Yep, Betty then Anne.
Okay. Actually, I had a comment and then I was going to make a motion, but I'll make my comment, and then we'll go to, to Anne. So we actually had very little input when it came to making this decision on virtual assessment. It was done despite our views. And, you know, I'm sorry, I tend to believe if, okay, you're going to pass that, then you need to go ahead and, and understand you got to pay for that. So that was my comment as a lead-in to my motion, but I will withhold my motion for Anne.
Thank you. Well, I was just going to say, we, Dean and I, I think, both sat in on the hearings on this. I know I did, and it was like, you know, the, we have a couple of school districts, more than a couple, that have made a cottage industry out of virtual schools. And when they realize, gosh, we have to rent a hotel and bring all these kids in and give them a, you know, a test, and that's expensive, and we don't like that. And so we'd like to give them a, a virtual test at home so we don't have to have that expense. And then they're explaining how, well, mom will clear the room, she won't be standing on the other side of the monitor going, "It's 16," you know, or, or whatever. And we're going, "Are you kidding me?" I said, "Which of us hasn't been sitting here in a Zoom meeting going like this, you know, out of the camera range?" So I couldn't even get the Democrats on board on this one, I don't know what the problem was. It's like, "Yeah, this just sounds logical." And we kept saying, "If some enterprising sixth grader cheats on this test, the whole state's results are tubed," and it just like went over their head. So I think this is important to, to fully fund it, to show them the consequences of really poorly thought-out legislation.
Betty, before you make your motion, I just want to jump on board with what Anne said. We heard last week from Legislative Post Audit, when we talked about a law that we really couldn't live up to because it was impossible, they said, "Well, you have to let us know." So we're letting you know again, just like we did during session. But Craig, I'm not sure, you know, what we need to do to make sure that our voice is heard, especially when the outcome is, is so obvious. Like you said, we're already behind, it's, it's not a matter of when, I mean, it's going to happen. So we need to get going.
Well, I could get more rude, but I'm kind of on the raggedy edge right now.
Betty?
I move that the State Board of Education request additional funding for the virtual assessment for virtual students for the operating budget 2025.
Is there a second? Dina? Questions, clarification?
Forty-five. Sorry. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? Dina?
I was just going to say that otherwise, if we don't agree to this, then we're saying that we, it's fine to put our state assessments that all kids take in jeopardy. They could literally take it. All kids could take it, or most kids could be done taking it, and a virtual kid do something that totally messes up the whole, the whole... The whole thing for everybody. So it could be invalidate the test. So I think it's something we're just going to have to say, hey, this is what occurs when you make these decisions. So you're going to have to pay for it.
Dennis?
Was virtual assessments done during COVID? There wasn't any, wasn't any virtual?
During 2020, when schools were closed, there were no assessments done.
Okay.
And then following year, at no other time have assessments been done virtually.
What's the total budget of the Department of Education?
Just, just the department?
No, for the department.
Just, just the department?
Just this department.
Everything flows through us, so just this department's 14 some odd million dollars.
So that's...
State General Fund, it's 15 some million, all funds, it's 55.
Okay, I just pointed out that it would be difficult to absorb this $9.3 million in that sort of budget, so.
It would not be possible.
If no further discussion, we're ready for a vote? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, five four, motion fails.
That's all that we had prepared for you, Madam Chair, in this short segment. So if, if there are other questions or issues you'd like us to touch on, we'd be able to do that.
Thank you, Craig. I believe this brings us to the end of our agenda. So we will see you in August. We're adjourned.